Good morning. We will call the meeting to order at this time. The first item is the approval of the agenda. Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to just add briefly, I have a couple of questions of our county engineer regarding the patching work that was done on Wall Street or County Route 22.
Okay, that will be part of the agenda. Any further additions?
No approval of the addition.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Next item is citizens to be heard. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard on any item that is not on the agenda? Come on up. Do you'd like to have a chair?
Sure.
Sure, that's fine. And your name, please?
Randy McFarland.
Last name again?
McFarland.
McFarland?
M-F-A-R-L-A-N-D.
Okay, Randy.
Just wanted to bring up something. We live out on County 12 between 17 and 11 on the gravel portion. And it seems to be, I don't know, getting worse, the road itself. I mean, I would expect you to round fix it, you know, this week or anything. I guess the condition of it, the level of it, when it floods, the emergency vehicles from Saban have to go all the way to Glendon to get around. The small bridge, not the main bridge, but the smaller bridge is in pretty rough shape. And when the grader comes out, they do a great job, but within, right, two days, especially if it rains, it's back to pretty, pretty rough condition again. They did dump some Class 5, it looks like, last Thursday. They haven't been back out to grade it yet, and it's starting to get pretty rough again. It's just a maintenance issue or something, you need to put in long-term planning. I just kind of wanted to bring it up to your attention. I don't know if anybody reports that stuff.
Kevin, did you have a comment on this?
I think let John go first.
Well, you know, that's the, I realize the problem with that one. That's one we made, you know, wide enough to pave and then didn't have, decided not to. So it's really wide, it's hard to maintain, I'm sure.
Is that just east of 52?
Yeah, it's east.
Or east of 11.
And they did pave about five years ago. They paved down partway to the bridge, but not all, they kind of cut in the middle.
And that's where you're at, right in that area?
No, I'm down, I'm a mile west of 17.
Oh, okay.
Red House. But I just, I mean, we travel every day, and we just probably notice it more than anybody. And there's, I mean, there's a lot of traffic.
We'll talk to the engineer today about that and see if there's something we can do. Because I understand that is a tough spot.
And it is nice and wide, there's no doubt about it.
It's wider than it needs to be for gravel, for sure.
Definitely. But I just, I just thought, well, I'll bring it up just to your attention. I don't know if anybody ever reports it.
Kevin, did you have any?
No, I appreciate you coming. I had a lot of people, a lot of people just call us and give us those concerns, but for your coming, thank you. But we'll talk to Dave and see what we can do.
Randy, thank you so much for being here. Appreciate your presence.
Have a great day.
Anyone else who wishes to be heard at this time? Lieutenant Brian Green of the Sheriff's Department requests authorization to replace laptop computers in squad cars. Morning, Brian.
Didn't we just do that earlier?
I wish we just did that. That was the in-car cameras I think you were thinking of.
Oh, okay.
Now we're looking at computers. Everything, I think pretty much explained everything on the outline. Again, our computers are at the point where they can't handle all the equipment that we have. We've got e-ticketing and, you know, fingerprint identification, and it just keeps going on and on and on. We looked at three different manufacturers, and the one that we used to have was Panasonic. They also have a, you know, a full tough book and then a half tough book, both of them. And the prices are pretty extremely higher than the rest. We did look at another one, too, but didn't really meet what we needed. We field tested this Gettac laptop computer, and it seemed like it's holding up pretty well. And it's a half rugged, it's not a full rugged. Basically, the manufacturer says the difference is that six feet to three feet. So you can drop the full rugged at six feet, and you can drop the other one at three feet. We've never had a problem with that. It's just, you know, you get on the gravel roads and high speed and stuff like that, you get a lot of shaking around and stuff like that. So our internal funds covered most of it, except for, I think, a little over $600, but it would just come out of our equipment budget. Don't you have any?
Any questions for Brian?
Have you, this is, let's see, it's GTAC, is that how you?
GTAC, yep.
GTAC. Have you, do you know anybody else using them?
Yes. There is three counties in Minnesota that are using them, and there's, of course, they're all throughout the United States, and Washington County, is about the closest to our county. They have 50 of them, and they've had them for the last two years. And, yep, they seem like they've been handling pretty good, so.
And then, question may for you or Lori, is the 18, is that what we've had established in our Internal Service Fund, or are we adding a couple?
No, we're adding, no, actually, we have 18. We are adding one, but then again, that'll just come from our general equipment bunch, so.
So then Internal Service Fund, it kind of worked out just right.
Yes, it did.
On this one.
Yeah.
That's good, that's good.
Pretty good. Again, you know, four or five-year lifetime on them, so these we hold a little bit longer.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Got it.
Let's pay the bills.
I move approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Bills are approved. Your today's budget report by our Administrator Brian Burke.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. I'm going to pass around two different documents, and these are a summary of the full document, 109 pages that, that we go over to look at each departmental budget. And this is just a summary of such. One is identifying the expenses by fund, and the other is revenues by fund. And I've done a little summary in the front of it, and we necessarily won't probably, well, we'll follow that pretty closely. But I'd rather really page to the individual sheets so that you know where this information is coming from. And if, and I've numbered the, renumbered the pages up in the right-hand corner so that it corresponds to the page numbers of the explanation that we put together. So if you want to go to page two, and I've highlighted some of the lines in it, if you'll notice that the surveyor's budget, they're at 85 percentile. I think, you know, in the winter, they did a lot of work within, inside for us, and probably have gone on to the other projects in the summer, so I'm assuming they will stay fairly close to it by the year's end. General government as a whole, if you'll notice on that page, it's at 49 percent. Now, this, this, this batch was run with approximately 58 percent of the year gone by, but what we're really kind of looking at is the 50 percentile, the first six months of, of the year. And you're seeing that in general government services, you're within the approved expenses at 49 percent. And I suppose you could even figure maybe 51, 52, somewhere in that area. If you wanted to get real technical, but I don't know if I explained that in here somewhere, but we are on a modified accrual basis. And I know the federal government used full accrual basis. In other words, if they obligated $5, they went over to their spreadsheet and they took that $5 off of their balance sheet. We don't do that in county government, and yet, we're not on a cash basis either. We just have a cutoff point from point A to point B, and, and what you spend, you don't add your obligated funds to that. But Lori does take about two months at the end of the year, and then applies all charges that were made during the prior calendar year. So that's basically a very brief definition of a modified accrual on it. And that's how we work in, in the county on it. So you'll see that law enforcement, that's a, that's a big budget, $3.5 million, and that's mostly from levy dollars. They're running well within the 50 percentile for the first part of the year, with the slight exception of med examiners, and they haven't figured out how to reduce autopsies when they're needed. So there's not much you can do about those kinds of things. If you go to page three, I know Corrections came in, you know, and, and gave their presentation for the 2013, or 2014 budget, and I think this should be of interest to you. They're staying very close and within their limits quite well. Corrections is at 44 percent. But there's a few exceptions, or a few explanations within their budget, and they've got a couple pages in the big document. The out-of-county boarding is slightly down. I think they've been averaging nine lately for, and they budgeted, I think, for like 15, 12 to 15 for, for 2013. However, remember that we are being reduced six beds for 2014, and at the end of this year, they need to clear some beds out in order to do some remodeling within the cells to take two beds out of each of the three cell blocks that they're reducing, six. So that's going to increase our out-of-county boarding on that, so, and then they plan to do some painting and things in there as well. So they plan maybe three, four days that they'll have the full cell block out of county, and that's going to cost a few more dollars in the process of that. So she was just making me aware of that. And then the, the public health with the county appropriations within the, the medical bills, they're right on track, she says. So that is doing quite well. And that's a big concern to us. They spend about $300,000 a year in medical bills. And, and to, to track that and keep that on track is really important. Public health on page three there, I highlighted that as well. If you noticed, you approved $567,701. That's in the first column. That's the budget that you approved last year for levy dollars. I should say, the budget you approved was an additional $250,000 being used out of reserves. And that's why when she comes in this morning, you'll see that their request for levy dollars is right in the $800,000 range. That's about what it was last year as well. They are running really well, as you'll see, without the $250 in there. This does not include the $250. So without the $250, they're running about spot-on with their expenses. What?
That's what we predicted when we?
Yeah, and that's good. Mary Fromm and Kathy sent me over the sheet, and they're projecting that they would, the first six months, if it was just identifying the first six months, they would have had to use about $28,000 of that $250 to, to balance revenues and expenditures. So I'd have to say they're, they're really spot-on with, with where they're at. And that's, that's good news. That's really good news, I think. If you want to go to page four on that, kind of sums up all of the general revenue dollars, and as you can see, we're at 46 percent. And again, if you want to use that 50 or 51, 52 percent, and that's, that's, that's good. That's good for our budget, good for expenses. It's tracking well. Page five, road and bridge with the construction season, that is really tough. I mean, we're right in the middle of construction season, and, and what Dave has told me on that, there's a couple things that are above, and that is overtime, and then fuel costs. And you remember, we had a harsh, harsh winter this, this, after the Christmas last year, is when we received all of the snow. They received up to 16, 18 inches out in the eastern part of the county, and they had a lot of overtime expenses and a lot of fuel costs. And he feels he's down in a couple other areas. So from an operational standpoint, he's, he feels he's doing okay in regards to that. Rhonda will be in this morning on page six, shows social services, and she'll run over those.
Hi.
Oh, you're out of here? Okay. But the social services, and I think many of you know this, Frank is, or Commissioner Gross is, is new on the, on the board this year, that's a very complicated budget. There's a lot of revenue dollars that come in, and we're affected heavily by federal programs and by state programs, and Rhonda tracks us just really close, but, and thereto, you used $450,000 of, of funds last year to balance the budget. And maybe it would be appropriate if, if you wanted to, if she could join me here. She's got a little printout of the different programs. I think you used about eight different programs on it, or is it 10?
Oh, 10.
10. And she's gone through that, she has another little handout. And I know you're kind of concerned about the bottom line, but I know some have gone through the individual programs, might be interested in to see how they're tracking. And we could spend just a few minutes on those, because, yeah, we'll hand those out. And if you remember right, that's about an eight million dollar request from the, I'll send five around. Eight million dollar request from levy dollars. And our levy dollars run in at 24 to 25 million dollar range, so that takes about a third of the county dollars. So I think it is one that we need to spend adequate time on. So we'll just, I'll let, turn to, to Rhonda and her summarize a little bit on this.
Okay. The document that I gave actually was intended for this discussion as well as the 2014 discussion, so I combined them in one document. So maybe for purposes of this conversation, we'll focus on the 2013 year to dates. So I've laid it out similar to, as I have in the past. At the top lists the revenues budgeted, and then the 2013 year-to-date, and the expenditures budgeted and 2013 year-to-date. So as Brian said, we're at, we're at about 45 percent of our revenues. And that's a pretty good percent, considering a lot of our revenues come in quarterly, some come in monthly, some come in every couple months. But as we've looked at the various revenues, that 45 percent is, is a, is a good number we're tracking, as we would hope to be tracking this time of year. So that's, that's a good percent. Expenditures overall for the, the budget is at 49 percent. For social services, and I, I went off of the report that Lori prepared from July 23rd. So for our administrative expenditures, I think that's about 58 percent. Would that be right, Lori? And then for our social service program expenditures, that would represent 50 percent, so a total six months, because we pay those bills once a month. So those would go through June. So that 49 percent is, is a reasonable number as well. So then what I did on the bottom is I pulled out the, the 10 different areas that Brian is referring to, and the first three in blue there represent our administrative lines that are separated into three parts of the budget, our income maintenance, our financial unit, our child support unit, and then social services. So this represents all of our staff, travel, training, office equipment, all of those kinds of things. So you can see the percents, the, the budget based on the year-to-date, and the percent that we're at. And again, I believe 4, or 58 percent would be the target for those from the report printed on the 23rd of July. Moving down to the MA pass-through, again, a reminder on this area, a lot of the things budgeted in this area don't necessarily impact the levy, because they are pass-through kinds of dollars. We pay out, and then we get reimbursed. And generally, there's some lag time on that reimbursement. But the areas that are mostly involved in the levy and the, the levy request are tracking not too, not too bad, so 52 percent there. And then on the back page is all of the social service programs. So divided out into the six areas, children's services, childcare, chemical dependency, mental health, disability, and adult services. Again, you can see the budget to, and year-to-date with the 50 percent being the target that we want to look at in those areas. And again, all of those are falling at, at a good mark. Couple things to note in the children's area, we're at 41 percent. What's happening there is we have a lot of out-of-home placement expenditures budgeted there, but we're seeing more of our kids go into mental health placements, so the payment is coming out of the mental health area. So it, it is just the way it is. We budget our placements in probably 15 different areas in the budget, and we pay for those placements depending on where they go and what their disability is. So those payments can come out of different program areas. So we've got 54 percent in mental health, 41 percent in children's services, but again, they kind of go a little bit hand-in-hand based on where those payments are made. So that's, that's kind of where we're at mid-year in terms of our percents.
Thank you, Rhonda. And she'll be addressing the other two columns and when she has a presentation for the 2014 budget. And just to summarize on that, Rhonda has included the $450,000 in her revenue flow of the reserves. And we had a conversation, we spent about an hour and a half with this yesterday, and she feels that she is pretty balanced with using the 450, might be slightly too, to the good. And I remember, slightly in, in, in social services can be $100,000. So, but she's not running behind, and, and that was the, the knowledge that we had and the educated, I don't want to say guess, but that's what budgeting is. So I think she's right on, spot on as best she could be. So that's really tracking well. Moving on to the, the expenses by functions, page seven, that's just a reiteration to show you where the, the public health is. I talked about that a little bit earlier. They're spot-on, too, they feel, running well within the, the budget there. And then on page eight, solid waste, and if you remember when you saw the full budget, solid waste had a, a little reduction in their, in their revenue or their reserve funds last year because of about a million dollar sale opening, and, but it seems like they always budget at least to, for purchasing some property, and, and we don't do that, so they run behind on, on expenditures, and they're at about 30 percent. On page nine is the total expenses for all funds, and that's running about 46 percent, 45 to 46 percent, you'll see, and that's a good thing. And you'll see the 60,000, or 60 million dollar budget there, and where you're at, the columns, the selected months of almost $28 million. And then the final page is page 10, and that does bring in the equation of revenue as well, because if you notice up there alongside my written page 10, it's page 109, so that's at the end of the, of the document. And it does show your revenues, and you remember, that's tax collections, which we collect taxes twice a year. And that's running 49 percent, which is, is very good. And the expenditures are running at 46 percent, which I think leaves the, the budget year in, in a comfort zone at, at six months. So, and then the second document, I won't spend a lot of time on that. I, I think I explained the modified accrual a little bit. And the only one on the revenue side is the, the one I wanted to bring attention on is page two, that motor vehicle is tracking in excess of its expected collections, which Lori talked about last week when she presented her budget. And I just highlighted some as you go through there. We won't go through the revenues specifically, because they're not as accurate at this time of the year, because they lag the expenditures in many cases, as, as Rhonda has indicated, and I'm sure Lori would verify. So we, we seem like we're right on targets. We certainly entertain any questions that you folks may have about the first six months of the year. I can't believe that I have a question.
I can't either. Yeah, this is a, I actually like the full report, Lori, with the, because I?
He's got it.
Yeah?
He's got the full.
I always leave the devils in the details.
Yep.
And I don't see the details here. But for, for today's discussion, and the reason why, like this back page now, this back page is basically a summary of where we are, everything combined, correct, Lori?
Correct.
That page 10 is. And so again, what we're seeing here through the first six months is we're 1.1 million revenues over expenditures. If you extrapolate that out, we're going to be 2 million over if the year would continue again, similar to what we were. The only thing that this really doesn't show me is which departments really are, I'd have to take these two sheets and take this one and, take this one and start adding and subtracting.
Right.
What's nice about the other report is it's right there for you. That's why I prefer that one, Lori, just, you know. But it seems to me that, this, this is a good indication to me that, you know, and the difficulties we're going to have with this budget in terms of getting it to within the lines that it has to be, that, that there probably is some areas that we can at least look at here, because we're tracking. And the last three years, these numbers have been pretty accurate. They've turned out to be pretty accurate from mid-year to end of year. And so I think, I, I just, before we start drastically looking at cutting areas where we don't need to cut, when we've already got significant room there, I think, to, you know, if you, you look at $2 million, what was our, what was our local levy 20?
Right around 25.
26, you know, so you're, you know, you're probably in the 8 percent area of revenues over, you know, 8 percent pushing there. You know, that's significant. You know, so I, I just, I bring that up here as we move forward, because, you know, we saw the original levies thing that there, we need to have a 7 percent increase. And I don't think we need to have a 7 percent increase. And still, not have to deal with a, a lot of cutting back.
I guess, between the way Kathy did her budget and Rhonda's?
Yes.
Is very different, right?
Well, it's a little different. One, one did not, Mr. Chair, from me, one added, Rhonda added the 450 that is in reserve in, and Kathy did not. So, yes.
Okay. And so it would seem as if, you know, we, you know, after you made your, and you predicted what you were going to spend this year, we thought that was high, so we made that, we made, took off that 450,000. But you're saying that, that it appears as if you're going to spend what you had projected that you were going to spend.
Well, the, the expenditures were still budgeted, you know, to include that 450.
We never cut the budget.
Yeah, we didn't cut the budget. So we just, so when I budgeted for 2014, I mean, I budgeted based on our actuals and what the trends look like. There's a couple areas, and I've revisited the document that, that we visited about, Commissioner Campbell. The areas that seem to most impact the budget are some pretty large The areas that seem to most impact the budget are some pretty large key program areas. So I've started going through those again. When I submitted the budget, I didn't have a full six months of some of those. So there's a, there's a couple areas that I think could, we could be looking at some further adjustments. But we've made adjustments in those bigger program areas over the last couple of years. So they're, they're getting to be pretty tight. So, yeah, I don't know if that answers your question. But the, the expenditures, even though we used four hundred fifty thousand in reserves, was still in the budget.
Mm-hmm. So the excess that we've got revenues over expenditures at the six, six-month period here on the summary sheet did not come from social service, other places?
Well, it's a combination of them.
Well, but, but you said she's very close to that, that full.
Well, for, for right now, it's some of those areas that are tracking. But for right now, I mean, if you, you know, we're at forty-five percent of revenues, forty-nine percent of expenditures, if you just look at that and extrapolate it out, you know, I would predict that we would be revenues over expenditures at the end of the year.
Right. Because revenues lag.
Yes, because revenues lag some. But some of our expenditures in our big program areas, mental health in particular, although this is pulled from a six-month budget, some of those are looking like only five months. So I have to go into all the detail of some of those because of the length of time it takes to process those bills.
Okay. Kevin?
I just, I just want to, just one question here on the, we recently, and you incorporated the new staff that into your 2014 budget, right?
Correct.
So when I look at the 2014 budget revenues, we have seventeen million, three twenty-one versus last year of seventeen million, two hundred. So there's like a hundred and twenty thousand dollars difference there.
Correct.
In revenues. Yet the, the expenditures, just in the financial assistant unit administration, which is all pretty much, like you said, staffing, there, there were up four hundred thousand.
Correct.
And I thought that a lot of our new workers would be compensated like on a fifty-fifty basis.
Right. And that's why you don't see the, the expenditure increases go up that much because it's balanced by the revenues.
Well, but the proposed expenditures are up four hundred, four hundred thousand dollars.
He's looking at this, not this.
And, but yet the revenues are only up a hundred thousand.
Right. But we have other adjustments in the overall budget. We have some revenues that are down, some are up, and so.
Okay.
It's, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Brian. We'll go on to county engineer Dave Overbow now? Or did you have any?
Just one more comment in reference to Commissioner Everett's comment. I, I think, and, and what, what we did last year, or what the board did with the four hundred and fifty coming from social services, I think they kind of felt too that the seven to eight million dollars was plenty for the reserve accounts, that they were willing to take that risk. Even though I think she, they felt that Rhonda's was, budget was accurate. And she's proving that it's pretty spot on. We, you were willing to risk that because of the balance, you were willing to buy that balance down. That is what my interpretation was, if I'm wrong.
I didn't even look at it as a risk.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you. Rhonda?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Your honor. Dave, we had an agenda addition. Commissioner Campbell would like to have a couple of questions for you regarding some.
Yeah, Dave, I've received multiple calls regarding the work that was done on County Route twenty-two Wall Street.
Okay, that slide area?
Well, not only that, but.
The patching.
The patching.
Oh.
When you look at, starting from Broadway going to the east, the common phrase to me is that we've inserted a whole bunch of speed bumps on that road.
Yeah, I think it did get a little high and our plan is to mill that down a little bit. I guess I don't know what happened if Andrew wasn't out there.
Have you, have you driven it yourself?
I have not driven it. I've heard about it myself, though.
It's, it's quite a ride.
Sure.
You know, and you go, if you go with the speed limit of forty miles an hour, I had one guy in a motorcycle said that he almost lost control of his motorcycle doing the speed limit.
He went from a dip with a crack score now to a big bump over there and they didn't make it any better.
Yeah, and I, I, you know, I, I know they're doing the best they can, but that, it is significant, I think, to maybe just look at.
Yeah, we're, well, we're definitely going to fix that. I guess our place, our plan was to get the little miller out there and to mill them down a little bit, try to shave them off.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I, that's all I.
John, you mind if I break a cord?
We had this guy that came in this morning.
This was brought up?
Yeah.
It's County area, isn't it?
Yeah, he's my, my district. Randy McFarland was here this morning, lives on County twelve. And he said the road is really, really in bad shape. You know, where it's, where it's so wide in gravel.
Sure.
And he said that the water stands in it all the time.
Okay.
Emergency vehicles, he even said, have to take a deep.
Well, there's, there's a low area there, Dave, that as you get close to the river there. Yep. Where the South Branch crosses twelve, I suppose, it gets.
Well, he talked about the other, the smaller bridge, the main bridge is okay, but the smaller bridge is.
There's a, there's a, yep.
The Oley Bridge. They would need some attention on there. He said it, once the, when the maintainer comes by, it's, it's in good shape for a day or two, and then it's.
Sure.
Goes bad really fast. So I don't know what you can do with it. It's just, the road is just too wide. It's just a.
Yeah. At one time, I think during maybe our tracking committee meeting or the board meeting, we talked about maybe trying to skinny that up a little bit. I think you had kind of mentioned that because it is real wide and it's not really in our five to ten-year plan to pave that. I think back in the mid-nineties, when they graded it, they kind of made promises they were going to pave it and then it kind of. But the day, daily traffic doesn't warrant it. True. Oh, absolutely, yeah. And there's no interchange there on the, on the interstate bridge, so it really doesn't go anywhere. But we'll definitely have to take a look at that. And he's going to have to try to spend a little more time blading it and crowning it up so the water doesn't sit on there, but.
Frank?
As long as they're on the subject of roads and stuff like that. I will give you one compliment on the deal with the maintenance supervisor. Appreciate what you guys did. I asked, I think last Tuesday, a college or something like that. It was all taken care of by Friday.
Yeah, looked good.
They just wanted to express their appreciation with, what you did. Thank you.
Thanks.
Dave? You have a budget, budget presentation, and you also have resolutions part of the agenda here.
Correct, yep.
Which one would you like?
Well, maybe if you just run through that resolution real quick.
Okay, why don't you do that?
I think this item was brought up when I was on vacation a couple of weeks ago. And it's something that came kind of through Brian Berg to me with regard to the St. Cloud MPO wanting to get some stakeholder input and support for adding I-94 improvements to the Minship thirty-year, twenty-year investment guide. And, and, you know, I kind of put this together as per what example they had. In the meantime, I think the city of Morehead weighed in on it and also added some local language to the resolution, which I also put the same thing in there, put a little bit of a Clay County twist in there. And then I run it by the FM cog to Wade Klein, and he also agreed that he thought the additions were good and he wouldn't see any changes to it. So that's pretty much what I did. Did you guys get the copy with the yellow there? That's the three additions that I made and it exactly copies, I guess, what the city of Morehead passed July eighth.
Well, you know, I think for, for the people who might be watching this, Dave, I think it, it'd be worthwhile explaining a little bit why, why we want to do this resolution.
Sure.
Because there's, there's funds out there, if we don't act on this, there's going to be funds, they're going to be spent in other parts of the state and we're not going to get any access to them, correct?
Well, that's just it. It's a twenty-year plan on how MINDOT is going to spend their money. It's kind of a guideway. And if we don't have any improvements on I-94 in this, in this plan here, we might not see any. And we definitely have some congestion problems of our own here in Clay County, specifically from the Red River, probably out to the east about two or three miles there. So as you cross and go into North Dakota, they've got six-laning on their I-94 and we don't. It's kind of a bottleneck. And yesterday, there was.
Just visit that yesterday.
Yep, there was cars backed out at least three miles from the Red River, at least three miles to the east, out past our building.
Three-car accident there, people gone to the hospital.
Sure. So I guess what we did is we put some specific language, as did the city of Morehead, stating that we've got our own I-94 issues and would like to see some of that six-laning being done within the city, city limits of Morehead on our ninety-four corridor.
I would think we'd want it to go out to three thirty-six.
Yep, that's correct. And, yep.
We have a motion.
I would, I would move the recommended.
I'll say it. Motion second, discussion. And favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion's carried.
I think right now my language says to go to the fifty-two inter, you know, interchange, but I can add three, three thirty-six.
I think you should go three thirty-six.
Yep, I'll, I'll make that change.
As part of your motion.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Dave, budget presentation.
Yeah, for the most part, the highway department budget's composed of a lot of smaller items. Most of them are under a thousand dollars. There's five or six big-ticket items. Most of, you know, some of them have been kept flat from year to year, being that they are so large. Some of them that I try to keep up with, such as like inflation, would be fuel. As, as the field seems to trend, our budget must also do the same thing. I'm going to go over some of the big-ticket items that have changes within, you know, up and down of a thousand dollars. And I'd also like to talk a little bit about the, kind of a one new request that I have, which would be adding some budget for a point five full-time employee in our front office area. Previously, we've got forty-five hundred dollars budgeted the last three to four years for some temporary staff when the one office manager would be gone or sick. And I guess I kind of think for an additional eight thousand dollars, we could get a point five full-time employee that would work from about a nine to one-thirty period. And I'll go through that a little more in the administration part of my presentation.
Excuse me, Dave, can you tell us what page this is on?
Fifty-three. Fifty-three.
Fifty-three to fifty-six. I think we're. I'll start with the, you know, our budget's made up of four, four different departments. We've got maintenance.
Fifty-three to fifty-six.
Right in there. Page fifty-three. We've got four different kind of areas or departments within the budget. And we have maintenance, construction, administration, and shop. So if you go to ten dash three-ten, which is maintenance, there's about five or six items I just wanted to kind of, to run through here. Ten-three-ten, sixty-two-seventy-seven is for training. We had two thousand dollars budgeted for 2013 and we kept that flat for this year. Ten-three-ten, six-four-five-four, uniforms, that was increased by three thousand dollars. It looks fairly significant. But every other year, due to the union policy, the guys get boots. So it's a hundred and seventy-five dollars per employee. And there's about twenty employees on the maintenance side. So that's the, the main increase. Now, next year, that'll go way down, reduced by three thousand. So it's kind of an alternating line item. Ten-three-ten, six-five-oh-two, that's one of the big-ticket items, that's road materials. We had eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars budgeted for thirteen and we kept that one flat as well. We think we can work within that budget. If I could jump ahead a little bit to ten-three-ten, six-five-six-six, that's roadway maintenance costs. I did put a pretty significant increase in there as I was thinking we're getting a little behind in crack filling and seal coating. We haven't done some of those maintenance items. And I'd like to see if we couldn't put a little bit more money in there and try to get some contracting done there. It's something that we used to do almost every other year. We've kind of scaled back on that and we've done more fixes in other areas. We purchased our backhoes, we've been doing other culvert jobs and other ditch cleaning type projects, but we've kind of backed off a little bit on the crack filling. It's, it's part of kind of what you're talking about on Wall Street, Kevin, some of these, some of these maintenance things, if we don't start doing, we're going to see other areas and other deteriorations like that. Our, our culvert line item is ten-three-ten, six-five-oh-four. That was increased by two thousand dollars. A lot of that has to do with the price of steel going up a little bit. And back in the, in the seventies, the county engineers used a lot of concrete culverts and they're actually a, probably a, they have a longer life, but yet the way they constructed them back then, they didn't have tie bars in them. And we have so much expansive soil that the, the ends break in between the joints. And then we see a lot of those failures. And I just, we see continually kind of a trending of more of the concrete culverts falling apart and being replaced by metal ones. So it kind of looked to me like we're probably getting close to the end of our budget every year, so I increased that one by two thousand dollars as well. Ten-three-ten, six-five-oh-nine is traffic supplies. We increased this one by five thousand dollars. And there's two, two reasonings for that. First one being the price of steel, again, on the posts is going up a little bit. The next thing is we do have a couple of grading projects next year and we're going to have a lot of the mailbox. We, a lot of times the people have non-conforming mailboxes and things, and when they get taken down, the road gets regraded, we put up a, a proper one so we can maintain it, the swingway style one. So I guess I think we're going to have a little increased cost there in 2014 as well. The last item, I guess, that I wanted to talk about underneath maintenance is ten-three-ten, six-five-six-seven. It's either the last or second to the last, the weed and brush control. I did increase this one by two thousand dollars. And what I've been kind of trying to do the last, in thirteen and fourteen, is try to put a little more money in there. We did have a little discussion and I think it's either soil and water conservation or the contractor that's been doing our spraying for a while, said, I think years ago, we had like twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars in there. And it got knocked way back down when there was a grant. I think we've had a couple of different people that used to kind of take care of the weed spraying for the county. And for some reason, that budget got knocked in half. And I'm trying to get that back up a little bit. And I think it's important to take care of our weeds. I think some of the local farmers, they really appreciate that. And we definitely don't want to see a, a spread of noxious weeds getting out there, spurge in that. So right now, we're sitting real good on weed control, but the second half of the year, if we need to go back out and spray, we've got budget for 2013 to do that yet. So I'm just trying to bump that up a little bit. Any questions on the maintenance, ten-dash-three-ten department?
Dave, the, the new request that you talked about.
Yep.
Is that in this one?
I, for some reason, I guess Brian and I discussed that a little bit, that didn't make it in, in your sheets.
So it's not part of this at all?
Correct.
It's supposed to be under new.
Brian?
But it's not even under new.
Correct.
New column here, but that's why I want to know.
Brian, can I have a second?
Mr. Chair, it is not. It did not make it in there for some reason. We talked about that. I think, is it additional eight thousand?
Correct.
Yeah, it's an additional eight thousand. And it's, it's adding hours. It is a new request, but I don't want to say it's insignificant, but within his personnel budget, he's asking for some additional hours in the part-time budget. And I guess we did discuss it, whether it is a new request or if it's just an increase to his regular. And we thought we'd have discussion and he brought it up for that reason. Because sometimes you'll, you've seen some of the new requests, there's a few dollars, twelve hundred dollars in supplies. Well, that's not a new request. That's, that's an increased cost. And this was kind of hinging on, it wasn't really a new position, he was adding a few hours to what he already has established. So that, that was, that was why it's not in there.
Okay, our next department area is highway construction, and I've got five different items there I just wanted to walk through. Ten-dash-three-twenty, six-one-zero-seven, that's overtime for engineering. I did increase this by forty-five hundred dollars. As again, we've got two large grading jobs and they usually require a lot of overtime. Paving jobs are extremely timely and they take a lot of overtime, but they're fairly short. The grading jobs take longer, they get drug out. If you get rain and other things, they, they drag out even longer. So I guess I'm forecasting probably some additional overtime there. Ten-dash-three-twenty, sixty-two-seventy-four, consulting fees. We kept that one flat at a hundred thousand. And I may be able to reduce that one further, yet I got to do a little more work on what we're going to plan for bridge design for 2014. So if there's an area that down the road I need to reduce a little bit, that's probably the first place that I'll go.
Do we have any, do we have any right-of-way issues that we're going to be dealing with now? Because don't we use some of that in that, isn't that what that line item is for, too, to, for the outside sources for, for that purpose?
Well, ten-dash-three-twenty, six-five-six-five, that's our right-of-way costs there.
Oh, okay.
Yep. And that one I did increase by thirty thousand. We went through that one pretty closely, 'cause I, you know, I, that, there again, that's another line item that'll go way up and way down. If you don't have grading jobs, you know what? But we are gonna be buying a lot of right-of-way on County Route eighteen there.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, so that's gonna be, and I guess I, I hope we're not shooting low on that one. Because farmland is so expensive right now. And I think there was a bunch of land that sold right up in that area, this, in the past six months or so. So I guess we got that one bumped up by thirty thousand. There again, hopefully, in that, some of these line items are gonna go way down in those years, once we get the bond work done, so.
So Dave, every, so, so the area of the salaries, overtime, if I can just go back to that one for a minute. I mean, that's not a massive increase, but... So that's for the projects that we're doing within the five-year plan, right?
Yeah, correct.
So, um, didn't, wouldn't some of that have been incorporated into the bonding money that we got? That is being paid back by that?
I think the, most of the bond proceeds were going strictly to what we looked at as contract costs.
Okay, so there was nothing in there for your?
Correct.
Okay.
The other one to take a quick look at is ten-three-twenty, six-five-zero-one. That's engineering supplies. We did reduce that one down by three thousand dollars. It went from eight thousand to five thousand. So I'm trying to show one or two little reductions that I do have.
Yeah, we're on the small line.
Yeah, they're pretty small compared to the... And then, ten-three-twenty, six-six-oh-four, equipment over five hundred. We did keep that one flat as well. Some of these items that, if we don't have anything real major planned, they do stay fairly consistent with how much wood we need, how much small electronic equipment and things like that, so. Any other questions on the construction department?
The municipal construction is down a hundred percent. I mean, it's eliminated.
Yeah, that's one where, we, there again, we only get about two-hundred-and-twenty thousand. So we kinda try to ramp that up. And we can save just about three years before we get that needs deduction from the state. So after, you know, Barnesville used a big chunk of it, Holly's using a big chunk of it. Now, we won't use any again until...
There's no projects planned for it?
Correct, yeah, there's no projects planned. So we, I'm trying to think if we show it up in the, usually what's showing up in the revenue side has to match what's showing up on the expenditure side, so. In that one there, we don't have any expenditures planned for fourteen. Um, the next area is ten-dash-three-thirty, and that's highway administration. And I guess we can go jump right into six-one-zero-five. That's the salaries, regular. If you look underneath the twenty thirteen budget, can you guys see where it shows forty-five ninety in the line below salaries budget? I guess, and that's kinda, I think, what Brian was tying into. Previously, at least in the last three to four years, we've always budgeted a little bit in there for part-time staff in case, you know, someone takes vacation. Because right now, we're down to just one office manager out there. And I guess I got to thinking with the sale of the permits, we are just, the permit business is so busy out there. Part of what I wanted to pass on was, in twenty-eleven, we budgeted for about forty thousand dollars of revenue for the sale of the permits, moving permits, harvest permits, over, over-dimensional permits, utility permits. We, you know, we're just kinda following a trend of what other counties are doing. Twenty-twelve and twenty-thirteen, that revenue jumped to sixty thousand. And the way we're seeing things go now in twenty fourteen, we're actually looking at about seventy-two thousand dollars of revenue. So I guess I, I just started looking at where the revenues are going, how much time it's taken. We did implement the online permit program, which is saving on actually writing the permit up, but it still takes an awful long time. They have, they have problems and questions with it, new people, you have to walk them through it. And I just got to thinking, we're currently budgeting forty-five hundred, almost forty-six hundred dollars for part-time staff. If I were to add another eight thousand dollars to it, it would have no benefits, so you wouldn't have the fringes in there. I, I could get a point-five full-time employee year-round, and I just think the benefits for our department would be astronomical. It's just so hard for one person to get their wheels turning. We, we can't quite, I don't think we're getting enough out of an office manager when they're doing a lot of this, the permit, you know, answering the phones and permitting and things. And I, I just think for, you know, like Brian said, it's not a, it's not a gigantic amount. But for the, for eight thousand dollars, I can get a lot, a lot out of it. And I just really think there's probably people out there that would like to work from nine to one-thirty. They'd still have a, you know, that kinda way I was looking at it is, maybe they'd still have a half-hour lunch. It'd be, you know, they could, if they've got young kids, they can run them to school, come work for four hours, kinda get things back on track, and then they can go pick the kids up. I think there'd be a, a market for somebody like that, so that was my thinking behind it. Ten-three-thirty.
So you wanna add eight thousand on this one?
Yeah, see, I guess what I did is, we, we got rid of then that forty-five hundred. And if I, if I remember right, Lori, I think that all bumped up into the full-time. Is that right? All the part-time dollars on, on every one of my department areas all got lumped into the salaries, so.
Right, our e-timing system doesn't let us split it between part-time and full-time, so all the, all the salary costs go into full-time.
It all into one, so, so that forty-five hundred did get added in there, and I remember that. And then I'd like to add another eight, so I guess it would be closer to two-seventy-five, zero-zero-seven, if you added eight to it. That's what my proposal was. Printing and publishing, that's ten-three-thirty, six-two-three-two. That was reduced by six thousand dollars. And a lot of that has to do with the fact that everything's being electronic now. We're not spending as much time and effort printing plans for the sale of plans, and that was probably a big part of that. Ten-three-thirty, six-six-oh-four, equipment over five hundred. Last year, actually this year, I guess, we bought a full-scale copy machine. So there again, I was able to back that off by that cost, about seven thousand dollar reduction on that area. I guess that's all I was gonna talk about for administration. Is there any other questions on that?
Dave, you had highway investment plan?
Yeah, what's that?
You've got one more.
One more department yet, or area, I guess. We got our shop, ten-dash-three-forty. Uh, ten-three-forty, sixty-three-o-one, building repair and maintenance. I did, we're, we're getting awfully close to the end of the budget after the end of the last couple of years, so I increased it by five thousand. And I guess the explanation I had there is, a lot of our outlying shops are older. They're, they're needing certain repairs, you know. Last year, we had to go up to the Yulin shop and replace a little concrete apron in front, 'cause in the wintertime, there was this, well, I guess, probably about this much gap under there, and the guy was sticking his coveralls underneath there to, to keep it, you know, and there's just things like that. I, I'm trying to keep up with our shops, so we're not spending extra money on, on heating them and insulating them. I think we did a bunch of insulation in Georgetown shop. We rented a blowing machine. We did it ourselves, but things like that. So I, I put a little more money in there so we can keep up. Here's our next couple of real big items. Ten-three-forty, sixty-three-oh-two, that's our equipment repair and maintenance. It's one of the line items that years ago was really hard to keep a handle on. But since we've been having a lot of our equipment on warranty, we're able to keep this line item flat at two-hundred-and-ten thousand. So I, I kinda credit that to the fact that we're making nice time and repairs, and most of our equipment's on warranty, so that really helps. Probably our, our hardest budget item of the whole works here is the next one. Ten-three-forty, sixty-four-ten, that's our fuel. I did increase it by twenty thousand, just looking at the trend there again. The cost of diesel fuels is fairly high. If we have good years, we, we break, it seemed like we break even. Last year, we had a real good year for snow removal, but yet, we did so many hauling-type projects where we, we spent a lot of money doing construction with our own forces in the summer. So we became fairly close last year, but it's, it's just, it's kinda hard to budget for that one. But I think we're gonna be a little, we're definitely gonna be a little short this year. We're already at about forty-five, fifty percent. And, you know, maybe we'll get lucky and have good November and December. That's what we're hoping for, so. Uh, ten-three-forty, sixty-six-oh-two, that's the radio equipment. Last year, we had to meet the narrowband requirement with the FCC, so we had additional monies there. So I reduced that by fifteen thousand, 'cause our fleet is pretty well set with radios. And then the last one is ten-three-forty, sixty-six-oh-four, equipment over five hundred. We reduced that one by five thousand, because our Barnesville shop is sitting pretty good for tools and equipment, getting back to pre-fire conditions, so we backed that one a little bit as well.
Question for Brian, Dave, or Lori. The, the internal service fund. We had, when we purchased the graders this year, to be delivered in December or January of fourteen. Remember, we had this discussion in highway tracking that, that there, there would need to be some additional dollars added to the internal service fund, based on the equipment that we got? Because didn't we add one or something that... There's something in there. I don't remember the full details of it, but...
Well, we, we had a four-wheel drive, I mean...
I had initially added fifty thousand dollars in there.
Which is what I thought.
But with the sales tax exemption, that's one of the places I cut it.
Okay, alright.
So I cut it fifty thousand.
Okay, well, that, that explains it then, because I, I knew otherwise that, that based on what we had done, for your budget to be right, we would've had to add to your...
So that, that makes perfect sense, though, that we're saving on the sales tax.
Yeah, that was a nice deal, about a million dollars that we won't pay sales tax on. Good, good.
So I guess that's pretty much what I was gonna walk through.
Dave, and then you had one more item here on investment plan? Or is that... Highway investment plan is part of the previous line. Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Yep, thank you very much.
Tell you what, we're gonna be in recess for about five minutes, and then after Rhonda's presentation, we'll have a formal break, okay? This time, we will call the meeting back to order. Brian is... Alright, and Social Services Director, Mr. Rhonda Porter, is going to talk about her budget. Welcome, again.
Okay, thank you.
Page fifty-eight in the great document. She's got the handout she'll refer to.
Yeah, the handout I had previously provided is, I did include the twenty-fourteen budgeted expenditures in each of those program areas. So that's the document I'll follow, and then we can cer- yeah, yep. We can certainly go into some detail. And then I did provide a few attachments that we can look at. So overall, I'm requesting, my levy increase request is two-point-six-six percent for, from twenty-thirteen to twenty-fourteen. And maybe if...
Rhonda, page fifty-eight here.
I'm, I'm talking off of this document.
Thank you.
Yeah, with the, the budget sheet itself.
Oh, yep.
This is the one you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's page fifty-eight is where mine starts. It goes from fifty-eight to seventy-one. Oh, yeah. Okay, so the levy increase request that I have for the twenty-fourteen budget that I've submitted so far is, represents a two-point-six-six percent increase. And I, looking down on this sheet into the, the budgeted expenditures, what I thought might be helpful is we could just go through those ten areas. You could see where the adjustments have been made up and down in, in terms of budgeted expenditures. I wanted to, looking at the blue area there, again, those are our administrative areas. And Commissioner Campbell, you had raised a question about, well, if you look at the twenty-thirteen budgeted expenditures to the twenty-fourteen, in all three of those areas, there's an increase. And why wouldn't you see that expenditure increase then above? So if you, again, for the financial assistance, overall, there was a four-hundred-and-five-thousand-dollar increase in the child support, seventy-nine, and in social services, one-ninety-two. And I have those listed on the right-hand side. So about six-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars. And you might think, well, why, why doesn't that represent a six-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar increase in the expenditure side from twenty-thirteen to twenty-fourteen? Well, the biggest piece is those are offset by, a lot of those expenditures are offset by revenues, as we talked about when you approve the different positions. But also, now if you go down into the more tan area, you'll see about a four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar reduction in expenditures from thirteen to fourteen. So it goes from one-six, one-point-six million to one-point-two. So, and those, that reduction in expenditures has a corresponding revenue reduction as well, 'cause those are pass-through dollars. So that's why it, when you look at just line by line, it doesn't quite follow. And then also, on children's services, you'll see about a hundred-thousand-dollar reduction in expenditures. So they kind of, in the end, you don't see the major shifts that you see when you go line by line. So I just wanted to highlight that, 'cause it took some thinking on my part as well.
And that, and that's kinda why I prefer the report that we had before, because it does, it does show revenues directly related to the expenditures.
Yeah.
So here it is, summaries.
It's a little summary, yeah. The only difference with that, too, in, in, on our budget is that some of the revenues that pay for certain expenditures come in in different areas. So it gets a little, but it, you can compare across years, so that's true. But, so I just wanted to highlight that. So again, maybe going back up into those admin lines, the positions that we approved for help, the healthcare implementation, as well as for the min choices down in the social services, have all been included in the twenty-fourteen budget. And all of the revenues attributed to those positions have been included as well. So the major changes here also included is everyone's steps, you know, the healthcare costs and all of that kinda stuff. Well, I guess healthcare in the...
Increase.
Potential increase isn't in here, but... So again, that represents all of our staff. The one thing I will highlight in the child support unit, you'll see it's a seventy-nine-thousand-dollar increase from thirteen to fourteen. In going through all of the staff for, in setting up the twenty-fourteen budget, I had a staff person that moved from my income maintenance unit to child support. And I cut and pasted her over, and she's in there, but her cost did not, my formula didn't come down. So she was actually missed in the twenty-thirteen budget. That position is eligible for a sixty-six percent reimbursement. So the net effect was about thirty-four percent that got missed in that twenty-thirteen budget. So that's the biggest difference in that area.
So the budget was, the thirteen budget was understated?
Yeah, by about thirty-four percent of her salary, yeah. And I, I get all the employees, we've had a lot of movement, staff moving in between, and so then I have to pull them all out into different areas. And I pasted her in an area that didn't have the formula, I guess. Okay, so going down to pass-through, again, the biggest reduction there is, we are working at eliminating a lot of pass-through dollars coming into our budget and having to be paid out. Some of it is legislative and program changes with the Department of Human Services. Some of it is we're working with our providers to have their own billing agents, so we're not having to pass through that stuff through our budget. So that's, a lot of that work is reflected here. I did, there's two increases in this area that would impact the levy. One is the county-funded burials. I, we budgeted seventy-five thousand. I did add ten thousand in that, based on what we're seeing. That is an area that I'll look at the expenditures in another month. We may be able to bring that back down, but it looked kinda high initially this year. And then also, we pay a county share for anyone that goes into a nursing home that is under the age of sixty-five. We get a bill for that nursing home. And our share, it looked like that was trending a little high as well. So I had added thirteen thousand in the twenty-fourteen budget. But again, that's an area that I'll watch, and perhaps that can come back down, but... Right. Right.
Is that a one-time?
We get a ten percent share for the cost of nursing home.
Oh, so it's continual every month?
Correct.
And that's, that's for medical assistance?
Yep.
Not for self-pay?
Right, no, it's for the, the medical assistance patients that are in, and they're under the age of sixty-five. And we work with the nursing homes to discharge them, to back home with community supports. But again, as, as they're there, we get that ten percent share. Then going to children's services on the back page, you'll notice a reduction in what's budgeted there that really isn't impacting the levy, because what I've done here is I've moved some of the out-of-home placement expenditures into the mental health area, because that's where we're paying for them. We've had more kids in residential Rule Five mental health placements than, than we had budgeted, so I've shifted money down to the mental health area. Childcare, just a slight increase there, and that is for children that are in out-of-home placement. If the foster parents work, we assist with daycare for kids that are under our custody in placement. And again, that expense is rolled into the out-of-home placement, so we just adjusted budget lines based on where we're spending it. Chemical dependency area is just a slight increase. The thirteen-thousand-three-twenty-one increase, it looks, it looked a little bit like our expenditures for our share of anyone going into treatment had been trending a little high. Now, the more recent report I got, it was leveling off a little bit, so that thirteen-thousand-three-twenty-one potentially could come back out. So I kinda put worst-case scenario in there. scenario in there. So that's one we'll watch as well. Mental health services, budget has stayed fairly status quo. However, we've, we've taken a pretty significant hit in this area. We actually lost a $240,000 allocation, and I attached that in your packet to talk with you about. It's the last attachment. So, the, the front page shows you at the top, it's for calendar year 2013 allocation. And of all of these allocations, we were receiving 594,464. The allocation that has been totally cut is the first one there, the former Children's Mental Health Targeted Case Management State Share Grant. And for us, that's 260,225. If you look at down the row, I, I didn't copy all of the 87 counties, but if you look at down, actually, Clay County was the highest recipient of that allocation, with Itasca County being behind us. So then if you flip the page over, this is the, the new allocation for 2014. You'll notice that that first line is totally gone. And what the state has decided to do is to redirect those dollars to a new Medicaid benefit set. And since this came out, the counties and MACSA has been communicating with DHS, because this was unbeknownst to the counties that this was going to occur. And we're working with the state-county liaison to try to somehow mitigate this, because we use these dollars, and other counties use these dollars, of course, to support mental health services. And we've used these dollars in our budget to pay for, we have about 98 kids that are getting what's called mental health case management, we call it Rule 79, from three of our contractor providers. And the providers bill Medicaid for that service, but then the state turns around and bills us 50% of that. And we've been using this allocation to pay for that. So that is a huge cut to us. Couple things I've been able to do, and Commissioner Campbell, I don't know if you remember this, but when we were going through this document, I got to the Children's Mental Health area, and I said, okay, we're underspending here, but I don't want to cut these budgets, because I need to reallocate, because we have unmet needs out there. Well, fortunately, because of that underspending, what I was able to do is, I was budgeting 290-some thousand in mental health case management, but we've been spending about 200. So I reduced that right away in the budget, so that was a savings, even though we lost the grant. It, it mitigated the, the loss of the grant sum. And then, I'm, so, so it's about 148,000 kind of impact to the budget right now. So I'm working with our three providers. We've met on all of the kids that are getting this service. We've identified about 25 of those kids that we're going to shift to a different funding stream, so the county wouldn't be responsible. But the remainder of the kids, because this is a mandated service, the families would have appeal rights if we were to just terminate the service, and we would likely lose. So I am working with DHS to try to, try to figure it out. But I did include that cut in the budget and reorganize some things to, to mitigate it to some level, but-
Was that a legislative cut or administrative cut?
Legislative, is my understanding. They created a new Medicaid benefit set, and they decided to take this money to pay for it.
Do we benefit on the other side?
Uh, not necessarily, because it, as I understand it, it's called clinical care consultation. And so our providers, what it sounds like to me is some of our psychologists, psychiatrists can have a separate funding stream to bill for, for activities, but it doesn't look like it's going to help us in other areas. Now DHS is saying that, well, they believe that counties are going to see some impact from implementation of healthcare. So, for example, we have other mental health program areas that we pay for, for individuals that don't have Medicaid or don't have healthcare. And they believe that eventually, with the expansion of healthcare and more adults and children being eligible for healthcare, we will see less expenditures in some of the other program areas. And I believe that that is likely the case. However, to quantify that right now, I, I can't necessarily do that. So.
And what way, you said we were the highest?
We were.
What was the formula?
You know what? It's a mystery. The formula is a mystery. And you can see on, on these sheets. Again, I didn't copy them all, but I think our biggest counties, some counties did not get any dollars in that particular area. Dakota County, for example, didn't get any. Goodhue, Hennepin. But yet, some of them received fairly substantial screening grant dollars. So we, in the screening grant, you earn based on activity. So if we have an individual, a child, that is exhibiting mental health symptoms, our staff or probation can do what's called a mental health screening. It gets recorded, and we get reimbursement based on our screening level, how many we do, and that kind of thing. So that revenue actually fluctuates up and down too, depending on in a given year, how many screenings, and how many children there are that require that level of screening.
Rhonda, the, follow-up to Commissioner Everett's question on the, the 250 or 300,000, somewhere in that area that we're losing in those, in those revenues. And you said the new program that was created by the state. It seems to me that something's awkward here, and the fact that, as you said, the mandated service is still there for us, but yet, this new revenue source for private contractors to go to get payment, that, that something doesn't wash, sit right with me on that one.
Yeah.
And I, you know, it seems to me that through DHS and through all of you as directors, I think we need to make arguments there that, you know, why, why should we as counties be responsible for all of this stuff? And then you take the revenue away, and then you allow contractors, basically, separate from us, to be able to get this direct payment on these new, on these new monies. To me, that doesn't make, that doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah.
Typically, typically, a lot of those contractors that we deal with, whether they're psychiatrists or whatever, they should be, they should be working through the county, as opposed to just being able to go directly to the state and get the money.
Well, a lot of our providers bill this Medicaid directly for a number of their services.
On Medicaid?
Yeah. And, and this is a Medicaid benefit as well. But I think that, again, I attach it to, and all counties used these dollars in different ways. So, for example, we've invested these dollars right into that, that mental health case management contract. Itasca County, I've been communicating with them, and, and they do it a little bit differently. They, was it Itasca or, oops, sorry. They do it a little bit differently. Yeah, Itasca. They use their money to fund the case management, but other kinds of mental health services as well. So we've isolated it to this program and-
For what's best for Clay County.
Yeah, for what's best for us. And because of this, I'm glad we did that, because it's a little bit more manageable to try to deal with the cut. But, and especially because we've had kids go on and off MA and managed care. If kids are on managed care, so they're on a PMAP plan, the provider bills the PMAP plan directly for the service, and we don't get county share, which is what we use this grant to pay. So they're also saying that the, the kids that we have on MA eventually will be able to transfer to managed care, and therefore, the county will never see a bill, which is great. But that needs to happen, and it's not, I don't have any, it's not on the radar at this point for when that will occur. So if that occurs into 2014, that'll be great, and then-
Is your organization working to get that changed?
Yeah, in fact, they were supposed to move kids to, it's called special needs basic care. Let's see, we're in 2013. So it's actually supposed to happen January 2013, but that's been delayed. And I think it's partly been delayed because of all of the healthcare stuff. So I do think that we will see some changes on the reliance of this with healthcare. It's just that I don't have that definitive to really be able to show how that could change for the 2014 budget. So the 200, the net amount that we lost, because we got a little increase in our screening grant, the net amount was 240. So I reduced the expenditures by about 100,000, so that left about 140, 148. And then we have a little bit of underspending in two mental health areas. So I figured I have about 60,000, I could reduce here to balance this out. And I haven't done that yet, so that would create a savings to the levy request. So there's about 60, 70,000 that's yet to kind of deal with, and we'll, I'll continue to work with the providers. We're not putting anyone new on the program, and although families may have an appeal right, if we put them on a waiting list, I'm, I think we'll try to serve them in other areas that don't create a county responsibility at this point. But the, the group that's currently getting the service, and if they certainly need it, we don't want to cut them off, because we certainly don't want to see these kids hospitalized or in residential care, unfortunately, because then we'll just be paying for them on the other end. So. But that, if, it's unfortunate we had that cut, because if we didn't, I think, of course, the budget would look a lot better.
Might we gain through Lakeland on that with those re-appropriated funds?
You know what? I have talked to Lakeland about it, because Lakeland is our biggest provider. And what I've asked Lakeland for is that DHS has still have not given me a definitive answer if this cut is happening right now, July 1 of 2013, for the state fiscal year, or if it's happening January 2014. But if it is effective July, Lakeland has committed to using some deferred money to pay for this. So, so that's good.
Yeah.
So that, that was a big hit for us, and we are, our state association will be working with DHS, and I am hopeful we can come to some sort of resolution. But there is, like I said, about 60,000 in the budget that I've submitted that I think I can yet juggle, reallocate to, to bring that levy amount down. And then disability service area was just a slight increase, but that doesn't have a levy impact, because we got a little bit of an increase in a grant, which then increased the expenditures, because we have to use that grant for that service. And then adult services, the reason that's reduced, expenditures are reduced, is that we're eliminating a pass-through program in that area. So although the expenditures are reduced, the revenue is as well. I do, one of the other things I have yet-
Rhonda, Frank.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I was just going to go back to childcare a little bit, not so much on the budget part of it, but you said you increased it by $10,000, because some of the foster homes are taking it to child, to daycare or something, whatever. So are we paying the foster people for taking care of the kids, and then we're paying additional amount for them to take it to daycare?
Yeah, that's true. We do. However, is the rates for foster care, there's a base rate, depending on the age of the kids. But if they do go to daycare, some of that is figured in what they get paid versus if they weren't at daycare.
Oh, and there is an adjustment on that?
There is some adjustment.
I just wanted to know if we were double paying there, okay.
Yeah, no.
That's a minor thing anyway, but I just wanted to know on policy.
Yeah. There is some adjustments I have yet to make in salaries. We've had just a lot of turnover in some positions that yet unfilled. So I have some old staff in there as placeholders till we put the new people in. So I think we'll see a little bit of adjustments in salaries go down a little bit once I make those, and we get our final people in place. So I'll have to work on that.
And your salaries, you're, Rhonda, you, you always, you always budget as though you're fully staff, don't you?
Right, yeah.
So, and that, and that's the same with every department. But, and we all know that every time there's, there's turnovers, there's a time period where there's laps, and, you know, so, so each year, there's that little bit of, there's always that little bit of cushion in salaries that, that helps cover that, so.
Yeah, I looked at that for the full year of 2012, at what, what I budgeted for salaries and what we actually spent, and it was about $22,000 difference. So it's a little bit lower than what we've seen before. But, and then I looked at it for 2013 budget to where we're at year-to-date. And I think this would be 58% of the year. And we're a little bit under that 58% as well, but I'm not surprised with the staff turnover and vacancies, so.
About during the course of year, if new staff were added, that can-
Yeah.
Make up for what was originally budgeted. You know, when you end up, you're, you showed 22,000 to the, to the good.
To the good, yeah.
Well, had, had you not added some unanticipated ones, that number would have even been higher.
Probably, yes.
Mr. Trump, I, I got a question for Lori, and I'm going to go back to the budget sheet that you handed out to us on the 22nd, it was dated the 22nd of July, on page 71. Do you have that?
Okay.
Okay, just a question on the proposed 2014 after-adjustments. 70, page 71 pretty much covers her entire budget, right?
Yes, it does, yeah.
Okay. And I see that the revenues, we only are showing 9,204.
Yeah, because it doesn't include the tax levy.
Okay.
And so you see that bottom line of 8,116.
That's the tax levy?
That's the levy request right there.
Okay, okay. So, but when we go to the year-to-date number, when we look at that 725, what is that telling us?
That tells us right now that we have $725,000 expenditures over revenues at this point.
Okay. And that kind of matched up with what we're, with what Rhonda's report was showing, where we only had 40-some percent of revenues in versus-
Yeah, because their, their revenues lag a little bit more than everybody else, yeah.
But it's revenues over expenditures, isn't it?
No.
No.
In this case, it's the other way around, but-
Yeah, but look what it says, total revenues over.
Well-
Or under.
Over, under.
Yeah.
If that's a negative number.
But it's not a negative number.
Yeah, so that's, means it's expenses. The expenses, all you got to do is look, the expenses are higher than revenues.
Well, I just, I see that, but I'm just looking at the total there. It looks like it's a, should have had a parenthesis, but.
If it's un, if the way the report reads, if it's nega, if it's under, it would be a negative number. See, I know it's a little different. Negatives represent income. Rhonda, anything else for us at this time?
Um, I, well, just maybe in the packet I gave you, I wanted to show you the, the first attachment is social service provider contract history. I did include, there's an additional 14,843 in the proposed 2014 budget for some contract adjustments, and you'll see the percentages there. So if the board would choose not to grant any adjustments, that could represent a savings to the budget. But they are 1 and 2 percent, and in a couple cases, I did not provide any adjustment based on fee-for-service expenditures. Okay? And then the- And then the, the attachment after that is our placements. Wanted to show you how placements are looking year-to-date. Lots of numbers here, but if you just go down to the yellow, you'll see our overall expenditure trends. And then on the right-hand side, third column in, is our 2013 year-to-date, and that represents six months. So we've spent 1.1 million, and we budgeted 2.26, so we're, for half a year, we're fairly on target there. And then you'll see what I budgeted for 2014. That slight reduction in budget represents about a $13,000 cut we got in a mental hea- a children's mental health respite grant, so I applied that cut to that expenditure area. And then you'll see the revenues, again, for 2013, we're at about 14% of our expenditures for revenues. What I want to see at the end of the year is that be about 22%, because that's how I budgeted it. So, so again, I did not increase any of the out-of-home placement expenditures for 2014. Revenues budgeted the same. The one thing is, provider rates will increase from 2013 to 2014, but I'm hopeful that we could keep our placements down and absorb that provider rate increase.
Well, that's quite a difference from 2005, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that was our highest year, yeah.
That's when, yeah, we were really-
That's the meth stuff we were dealing with, and, so.
But, you know, and that, and that goes to, because we see that even from this, and where the courts are at too, I think it has a lot to do with that, doesn't it, Rhonda? Because even, even when it comes to our regional juvenile center, wherever, you know, the, the numbers are down on that, because the courts are really looking at that as a last resort type of deal now, and I'm assuming that's the same in every area that you're dealing with, that you get into, these are, moving them from their home as a last resort.
Right, right, yeah. Yeah, absolutely, and we've had, you know, some fairly, number of placements. We've had a, you know, large family of young kids placed. We had, in the last month, we've had about, I want to say, eight, eight or nine young kids go into care. We've had some leave, but yeah, we're, it's, it's feeling pretty busy in our child protection, child welfare unit. A lot of stuff going on.
I think it's interesting, though, this, this chart is really fascinating, because, I mean, it's, it's the one thing we never can predict fully, but it really has been pretty consistent the last 10 years.
Yeah.
Before then, it seems to me it was, it was really erratic.
It was all there, yeah.
You know, we never knew.
Well, that was, like Rhonda said, that was, that was when the meth was just epidemic, you know.
Yeah. Now, what I'm hearing, just anecdotally from my staff, is that they're starting to see some of the reports that are coming in are involving meth again. And we had one child placed where meth was actually a baby from the hospital where meth was an issue. So I'm hoping we're not gonna see a huge trend, but we are seeing some of those come back.
Hey, Rhonda.
Thank you.
Okay.
We're gonna take about a 10-minute break at this time, and then we'll have the main lady come up here.
Mary Fromm from Public Health.
Kathy, you're on.
You're welcome. Okay, thank you very much. I did just hand out a review, just, maybe it's an easier format to go through, you can let me know, but the first page is, is really the total revenue and total expenditure, just summary, and you'll see 2013 budget, and then the 2014 budget and percentage of change. That's on the first page of the, of the one I just handed out. And then the second page is also revenue expenditures, but it's in our areas of responsibility, so you can see the variation from 2013, 2014, within those areas of responsibility. And then the third page is, there is one third page. Third page is the, oh, okay, and the third page is the areas of responsibility with all of the specific programs within those areas. So we really kind of drilled it down, so hopefully that will make a little sense as we go through this, because I know our budget gets to be a little bit complicated. So stop me when, as we review this, but as you can see, the variation with the 2013 and 2014 budget, just some contracts and grants, federal, state, and other grants, there's variation every year with the amounts of grants and contracts, and we, and we do have a significant, significant number of those, as you see on the, when you get the whole listing of our contracting grant approvals. And then our third-party reimbursement, which is in our insurance payments, MA, Medicare, you see that. That, of course, is just as we see the trends and our best guest estimates each year, because that varies considerably depending upon the insurance payments and, and those reimbursements for our various programs that we can't bail for. We also have self-pay miscellaneous revenue. Again, those are just some donations and fees that we would obtain, any stipends or one-time training costs. And then we also have the Barnesville ambulance in there, which is, this board approves the, the reimbursement to the Barnesville ambulance, and it's still listed in our budget, so we accommodate that.
Why is it zero for, why is it zero for 14?
Well, that's, it, it's county dollars, it's not, it doesn't come out of our areas and expenditures, so we just listed in the budget.
Gotcha, yep, yep.
So it's, it's listed as, due to the Barnesville ambulance underneath the expenditure column, as you can see on the bottom. And then the salary expenses, there were some additional positions in our 2014 budget that we didn't have in our 2013, and one of those was, we have a position for that Min Choices. One, one staff person, or it would be one public health nurse, and that was approved when Rhonda from Social Services and myself and the managers presented on the new screening tool, the Min Choices screening tool. You know, Rhonda had hired an additional person to start with, and we have a person listed in our, in our budget. Our community transformation grant liaison was not listed also in the salary expenses, that was later in the year, and that is a grant-funded position, but that position is listed in our, in our budget for 2014. A jail LPN at .2, and we contract, of course, for the nurses for the jail, so that was an additional nurse, an LPN to assist the full-time RN jail nurse, and that was not in our 2013 budget. And then we also needed a, a chemical dependency assessor for detox. The current one that we had used in the past had been an employee for many years, and that employee resigned, so we added an additional chemical dependency assessor contract. So we have a backup for the contract we have for a chemical dependency assessor. So those are the differences in some of the positions that were not listed in our 2013 budget. Any questions on that?
Any questions for Kathy?
We have some increases in our travel and related expenses, and, and that's in direct relationship to our statewide health improvement project. There's a lot of travel that is incurred over the four counties, so there's been an increase a little bit in that travel cost. And also with our Clearway grant, which is our tobacco grant, and those are both funded, grant-funded positions. Let's see, some of the other, are, we did, we anticipate the same amount of funding with some of our grants, like our local public health grant dollars, our maternal health grant, our TANF home visiting grant. However, we don't have those final amounts from the state, those don't come in until fall. So this is just an anticipated amount of, of the revenue. Our emergency preparedness grant, we did receive a reduction in the funding. Part of that funding comes from, it, it did in the past, came from the Fargo grant project through the North Dakota Department of Health, and they received reductions in their grant funding, so therefore we received reductions in the amount of zero. So we have now zero funding from the Fargo side. We also received some state reductions in that emergency preparedness funding. So that was one of the grant projects that has a reduction in funding. The emergency preparedness coordinator that we have on board is doing the Wilken County emergency preparedness planning, so they do not have a coordinator, they contract for our services for that. So the Wilken County allocation for that grant will be, will stay here in, in our budget. We also anticipate that Otter Tail may contract for a little bit of time for that emergency preparedness coordinator. We, we don't have the final results of that, their budgeting process is currently in place too. So we don't know what that amount will be exactly, what the approved amount will be, but we anticipate some funding for that. Uh, let's see, other things, our variation, our clinic expenses, when we do our immunizations and our flu vaccines, you know, there's, you know, that's a, that's a service that is certainly not fully funded. There's no specific grants, we do bail for the, for example, the flu vaccine, that's a service that we have provided. We have discussed in the past whether we should continue with that. I think this board in the past has agreed that that should continue. There's many entities in the community that provide flu vaccine, including pharmacies and other medical providers, but it's certainly something we can continue to provide, it's just, there's an expense to that, it doesn't fully, it's not fully funded.
Couple of years ago, on the H1N1 epidemic, isn't to worry about, it was really, did the government, federal government step in and furnish a lot of this?
Yes.
Vaccine and the expenses involved in it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but that didn't happen like last year, did it?
Right, and that was just during the time when, when they considered that, you know, a pandemic. But with the flu vaccine, we purchased that, and, and there is some state vaccine for the, you know, the uninsured.
Sure.
And for children and adults, but-
All right, thank you.
For the most part, there's the cost of that vaccine. And there's also some lead screening that we, we provide, both in WIC and with our, our children that we see with our child and teen checkups. And there's a little bit of increase in that lead screening expense, there is some revenue that is tied with that, we can bail for some of the lead screening, but that's something that we continue to do with, with all of the, of those two programs. Our family home visiting is also an area that we, we depend upon the block grant and the TANF home visiting money. We did expand our Nurse Family Partnership Home Visiting Program, and I shared that with this, this board to approve that contract, and that was with Polk, Norman, and Menomen. So they contract for the Nurse Family Partnership Coordinator that I have, the Nurse Coordinator, so we have some revenue there. She provides the coordination of the services for their program, and they reimburse that travel costs in her, in her time. Let's see, if there's other things that I can mention.
Have you pretty much covered what's on these first two sheets? Kathy?
Um, yes, other than the detox, and the detox, and that's one of the areas that we certainly have an increase in expenses because of the CD assessor and, and food costs are increased because of our clientele numbers. But we anticipate some revenue for detox. We have worked with North Dakota with that interstate agreement, and we have an agreement with Southeastern Human Service Center. They have began, the contract is in place, and we are serving some of those clients for them. And so in June and July, we have served a number of clients, and that's full reimbursement with that contract, so that will assist in the costs, you know, in, in this, in our detox. And we are currently in progress with another contract with the VA Medical Center, so they're awaiting some approval through their system, but they anticipate that their, the utilization of our detox would be pretty important. They're pretty excited about the medical model that we have, and they have no other place to, to put some of these folks that don't need in-house care, and also do not, the Fargo detox facility, Center Detox does not meet many of those needs. So we anticipate that they have a fair number of clients that they would like to have us serve, so we anticipate revenue there as well, because that will be a contractual agreement. So we really anticipate with those two, we're gonna see a full reimbursement for those clients.
Are we increasing our bed capacity again?
Well, at this point, we, we are still at 10-bed. Our capacity in June and July has increased, we had about 23 days, just mid-June to mid-July, where there were eight to 10 clients, so we typically have been averaging about five, so we're gonna see an increase for sure. I mean, that certainly poses an issue when we're at full capacity, and then we have clients that need to be shipped out, because it, there isn't a, a good plan with transporting clients out of the community, because they have to go to another detox facility. So that, that still remains to be seen, how that's gonna play out. But I anticipate that we're gonna have to look at, as we hit the capacity of nine and 10 on a regular basis, we're gonna have to look at increasing our bed count, particularly with the two new contracts we have.
Will it take long to, uh?
Well, we have to, the, the state has to reissue a license to license us for 16 beds, so it is a process. I don't anticipate it to be too lengthy, but I would suspect, you know, turnaround time with, that is, you know, a month or two, I would suspect. We have beds, the beds are sitting there.
Understand.
The space has been allocated before, it's already been licensed at one point for 16 beds, so it's not like a new facility or a new expansion. So that part with the state would be pretty clear.
What staffing?
So we have to increase staffing to two staff per shift.
Quick question on the third page of what you handed out to us, Kathy. This one?
Okay.
At the top, at the very top, 2014 budget, in 2014 is across, should, what do those read, 2013, or is that all?
2013 and then the 2014 budget, the numbers you're wondering.
Well, yeah.
The first column is the revenue.
Pardon me?
The first column is revenue.
Okay.
The second column are the expenses, and then the third column is the net difference.
Okay, revenue, expenses, and net. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Rhonda.
Before we leave detox, I think that, and Kathy and I discussed this just yesterday, that this is kind of a complicated one, maybe it's not all that complicated, but the revenue increase or decrease is reflected positively or negatively in social services budget, because they administer the detox program, because they're the medical side of it, but the funding source comes through social services. So if, if they do see a positive, and that was the idea of this expansion and the legislative change that Commissioner Whelan really got behind and pushed, was to change this to, to make this a community sport, supported function that would generate some revenue. So hopefully, if the beds are needed, that the revenue is going to reflect to more than cover the expenses, because that was the idea of trying to reduce our detox spend. But it will not affect public health's budget up or down in regards to it, because those funds are, and they're all county dollars, but they come out of social services budget. It, it is a little confusing, we talked about that yesterday, and we, we thought we should talk about that today, just a little bit, so that you clearly understand. I mean, it's, it's over a half million dollars, so.
And what offsets that is, is we do get some reimbursement for insurance payments, and then we also are, have reimbursement from the other counties.
Oh, you do, you handle the insurance reimbursements then? Okay.
Yeah, so we do have some, some revenue that comes in-
When there's insurance involved.
For, for insurance or client fees, and then, and then the other, the client fees are really from the other counties that utilize our detox, and there are other counties that send their clients to us. Any questions on the detox before we, you know, you know, we anticipate that this will be a, a good and a little bit problematic, you know, process with North Dakota. Part of that is, you know, we certainly, when we get to 16-bed, we have to have the staffing to meet those 16-bed requirements, which is two staff per shift, so that will be an increase in staffing that will have to, that will have to happen. But the, but the revenue piece of that is, is good, when we have contracts with other facilities, that's, we have good payers, because we have a lot of clients that are uninsured, Any questions on the, the first two pages then, in regards to the variations with the 213 budget and the, and versus the 214 budget that we've got listed for revenue in all the programs and the expenditures, and we've just summarized that, obviously, in the first two pages. I don't know how much more detail you'd like me to go into, I suppose. two pages. I don't know how much more detail you'd like me to go into. I certainly can go into further detail about each of the program areas. I don't anticipate any, other than the, the staffing that I've mentioned, that's already been placed in there, I don't anticipate.
Any questions?
Staffing changes.
Okay. Is that a way at this time?
Pardon me?
Not at this time?
One, one que, what about the inter-fund transfer? What?
That's the difference.
Is that on the second page?
Is that what we're, our funding of it? Is that?
That's correct. That's correct.
And that's the current, so the 13, we, we put in 817 from levy dollars.
Yeah. And part of that was carryover dollars. The levy dollars weren't even 17.
Actually, we, $250,000 less than that.
567 is what was levied.
Yeah. And, and, you know, the savings for us is anytime we have an additional grant funding that comes through, you know, that hadn't been budgeted for, that we, and we're always seeking all those sources of grant funding. And then, if our revenue increases with all of our third-party reimbursement that we didn't anticipate, that, that also offsets some of that. And now, with Otter Tail contracting with some of our services, that should offset. That's not reflected yet, because we don't have confirmation of any of that. So, there should be some, some things that offset some of those that we have additional revenue for.
The sheet that you handed out last Tuesday, that we were given last Tuesday, on item 413, infrastructure, said it had a 756,000 total on it. Now, it's got 188,000 total on it. Was, was that just a misprint?
I, I took the, I took the inter-fund dollar amount out of that total.
Well, that's what that 55, 67 dollar.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah.
And the COLA, of course, isn't reflected in here, but step increases.
The COLA is not.
Correct. COLA is not. I think you've got something.
But it is on, it is on that.
It's, yeah. I added in my sheet, but it's not.
Oh, in your, yeah. Not in our sheet, sorry, but Lori has it in hers. Okay.
Okay.
Is this the next sheet, or Kathy, this one? Or is that this?
That's her. Oh, that's the summary of our 2013. I wasn't sure. And I think Brian probably gave you a little bit of a summary of the 2013 budget for public health. I mean, we're, we're pretty much right on with our budget and don't anticipate in the next year to, or the next half a year to have any significant changes, other than maybe some increased revenue.
Oh, that'd be nice. Any questions for Kathy? Brian?
Mr. Chair, and I just wanted to make sure that Commissioner Everett was clear on that. That 87, on the second page, that 817 was what you approved for expenditures from, from county funds. And, but the levy dollars were 567,000, and they were offered, authored, authorized to use 250,000 from reserves. And then, if you go to that fourth page, is what I was referring to this morning, that, that is not considering the 250,000, though.
That's correct.
That is considering the 567, and they're about spot on. They're $28,000 over. But that, for a $5 million budget or four and a half, that's, that's pretty darn close. So, so they, I know that's in reverse to what we talked about with social services, and it's unfortunate that's a little confusing.
The amount, the amount in, in the budget for public health that's subsidized by Clay County right now for the 2014 proposal is 842,927, correct?
That was what, was authorized.
Correct. Yeah. Which is correct.
County funds. Yes.
So, we haven't talked about using any, any reserves or anything yet for 2014?
That is correct. That is correct.
I know that was fast and furious, but any specific questions?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Everett?
Oh, what do you want from me?
Would like your committee reports.
Mr. Chair?
As long as you're available.
Yeah. Mr. Chair? If we may, we do have some general discussion, and it was kind of thought for the budget purposes, because I do have just one amendment and a, and a handout for some general discussion on the budget, if we can.
Pardon me? Right. I just, I'll hear. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you very much. The first thing I want to hand out is, is the, is the new request, and I've added one to the bottom. I want to make sure everybody gets a copy of this to improve, I guess, from the form back there. There's five copies. And then, I will also hand out a sheet that reflects this being figured in in just a second, but I'll just address this, that you had talked about the new request, and, and Commissioner Campbell wisely pointed out the fact that we had had a committee meeting in regards to establishing a funding plan for a new county jail, which will have to take some time, take place sometime in the future. And in our committee, we talked about maybe 2018 to 2020, somewhere in that area. It, we, so we need to look at some different things. And one of the options to, to attempt to start funding this project was to put 62,500. Now, that's an approximate amount, because what we, what we were talking about is one quarter of 1% of the levy. And our, we were using an approximate levy of, of $25 million. And as you can see, last year, we levied 24,294, and it'll be closer to the 25 million probably by the time we're certainly done with this year. So, that's why the 62,500 figure comes about, is it's 1/4%. So, I did go back and look at the minutes of our, of our planning committee, too, and we clearly were unanimous on the fact that we would recommend to the county board inclusion of a starting point for funding a, a county jail. And, and as we progress through the, the planning process for a budget, we'll see where that ends up. So, but it was a recommendation of the committee, and I, I made an error in leaving it out, I'll tell you. When we first started putting together our figures, they were almost overwhelming. We just couldn't bring ourselves to putting it in at that point. But it was clearly decided that we would put it in and get started down the road on that. So, my apologies on it. With that, then I'll hand out another summary, and this then reflects some slight changes on it. And it also, it's inclusive of the, the 62.5. And you're aware of this cover This doesn't change much from last week, because we really haven't started looking at. Maybe after the discussion today, we'll, there will be some, a more sense of direction of where we want to go on this. But what this does, Lori did add in the new construction. It was 1.05. I think I mentioned that on the cover sheet last week, but now it's been included in that spreadsheet, which you have always headed on there. And the, you know, it's the new request, it's the COLA. There's not a whole lot of change. The only thing that isn't reflected on this one that was last week, and, and Rhonda is, is, points that out very clearly, that I did put on that, that summary sheet last time, was off to the right, I showed what effect that $450,000 had to her net levy increase. So, that, that's not on this one, and we can certainly include that at a later date. So, that's the changes. We included that, that new request, and we've, Lori rerun this. And then, if you want to look at the second page of this, she, we kind of had an extensive discussion about this, and she has looked at, and she can certainly explain this. I shouldn't talk for her. If, if you want to explain this, Lori, go right ahead.
Well, I just went to the instructions on, on how they were going to calculate our levy limit. So, I just went through and put some of our numbers in, and came up with my closest guess as to what our levy limit is going to be. And if you see on the far right-hand side there, I came up with 23,885,786 as our levy limit. And that, that's as close as I can come. But if you back that up into the, into the spreadsheet on top, that will give us a 3.25% levy increase overall. And then, if you take, take the new construction off of there, that'd be 2.25.
Yeah. But, Mr. Chair, that is also considering going outside of the levy limit with.
Well, we've always done that. We've always put our debt outside of our levy limit. So, that's just, that's just going by what we've always done in the past.
Yeah.
So, backing our, backing our debt out of there, so.
Right. And you'll see some figures down there, that that 1.18%, that's the levy limit. That's what we can increase, the levy, by the rules that the legislature established. And then, the 2.07 is the debt that they say we can go outside, and we can, with your approval, increase the levy 2.07 by the payments of the debt outside of the levy. So, the total levy that we can increase would be 3.25. In my past history, we never used the outside of the levy limit, and Lori has assured me that you have always done that here. So, that's where, that's where we get up to the 3.25.
And keep in mind, this is a total estimate for both the county program aid number that I'm using, as well as, you know, the formula that I went through, so.
Right. And just to follow up to that, we may be light on the guesstimate for the insurance figure, and I think that was pointed out last time, too. Mr. Campbell feels that maybe the 200,000 is a little light. We haven't got our exact dividend figure, but I did ascertain off of the AMC web, or the MCIT website, that their dividend this year is, is, they have voted, and it's going to be $19 million that they're going to run. Last year, it was about $30 million that the, the dividend was. And at that rate, if it's divvied out the same proportionate that it has in, in recent years, we would be, and, and you won't see this in print in front of you, because this is just conversation of, of what being done. That would mean about 290 million, or 290,000 to us, and we have put in the, this equation, 150,000 instead of 290,000.
Thought it would be about double that.
Yeah. So, so that's a real positive thing. But remember, on the other side, that, that medical, so.
That could end up washing each other out.
It could be offsetting itself. And we still think on the county aid that we may be 50, 60, 100,000 dollars, or 50, 60 at, probably at the most. A little light on that. And each day that goes by, this is going to change, and, and we'll have conversations today as to where you want to go on some of the new requests and some of the things, too. So, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna come together.
Any questions for Brian, comments at this time?
I probably asked before, but when, when will we know the final figure on the insurance cost?
Middle of this month.
Yeah. August 17th, was that the date, or was it? It was right in the middle of, middle of August.
Middle of August.
How do we handle that on what we're really looking at, or dealing with?
Yeah. Yeah. All that information helps. I mean, every $100,000 helps.
John?
The, the 3.25 is, with, with the debt repayment, is what we can, can actually raise then from the levy.
That's, that's correct, Mr. Chair, to Lori's best guesstimate.
Right.
And if you notice, where we're sitting right now, we're, we've got to cut approximately a million dollars to get to that 3.25.
All right.
That's, that's what we're looking at right now.
And that figure would be the fourth item under contingency item, then 987,000 is what we're looking at.
Further comments for Brian?
Well, are you saying that nine, that's how much has to be cut from what's being proposed?
What is being proposed right now, Commissioner Gross? Yes.
Mm-hmm. No. I guess, you know, I just wanted to make a general comment as, as far as, I appreciate all this presentations that have been given over the last two weeks and stuff like that. You know, and that's given me a lot of information. Plus, I've got over 100, probably 120 now after the day, 130 pages of stuff to look through here. And I just don't know, you know, I know Commissioner Campbell's very informative, I mean, very knowledgeable in this stuff. I'm, I'm not, you know. But I want to rely on, you know, I feel we should rely on the person that we hired to get this stuff together for us, you know. We have to know how much we can increase the, this last two pages now, or three pages that you gave us. I think that's going to be some good information. That's what we're going to have to rely on. And I think we have to rely on these requests. And I think, as far as I'm concerned, I'm going to rely on the person we hired to come up, you matched this up here. Then, we have to say, yeah, you can get a 2% increase, or a 1% increase, or a 3% increase, you know, what we want to go with. But I don't know if I can go through all this budget. It's probably my job to do that, but I don't know. I got some job descriptions this week of people. It's their job, the department head's job, to do the budget. You know, it's not our job to do the budget. It's probably our job to regulate the budget, but it's not our job to do the budget. You know, I, I just feel, you know, what I, what I need is, is these requests and this here, that's what I need to do the budget, you know. I'm just going to say that. I mean, I'm new on, I'm new on this commission. You guys have probably done it differently, you know, but I feel he was hired to do a job here for us. You know, he's getting paid to do it. All the department heads are getting paid to do it. They're paid, you know, and they have a lot of knowledge on this stuff, and I appreciate their knowledge. And I'm just, I just feel that we have to set a limit, and that's what our job's going to be. You know, they say there, this, one department, I mean, who do we have here? Dave today, and Kathy, and Rhonda. Well, you get some, you don't get some, you get some. I think that's his job, you know, and I think he has to come to us. You guys may feel different, but that's my feeling on this. And glad to hear your, your opinion on that.
John?
Well, I mean, I, I think you're right. We look, we get, it's for them to recommend, but it, it is up to us to make the final decision about where the cuts will be. I think that's, that's, that's up to us. They, we can ask for their recommendation as to what they think would be the least harmful for their programs and so on. But the final, final decision has to be by the commission as far.
Well, right. The final decision is by us how much. But are you going to say each department should cut so much, or?
Well, I think we, we ask them for their, their advice on that, and in some cases, we, you know, we would cut it. In some cases, we might not agree with what their recommendation is. And it's for us to, to.
Okay. Well, like I say, I feel that's, con, ministers drop, but that's, and that's just my opinion right now. I'm, I'm new here, so I'm okay.
Further comments?
Yeah. I, I, I agree with John. I, you know, I, and I, that's why, I think that's one of the key issues, is why county commissions exist, is to oversee what the staff of the county does. We, we're the voice of the people of the county. We're, we represent the people of the county. And ultimately, I agree that, under the administrator form of government, the administrator has a lot of responsibilities. And, and one of them certainly is leading in the, in the discussion on budget. But ultimately, he also has to work directly with all of them, and to put all of the, you know, all of the pressure on him to make the cuts is, that I, you know, I, I, this is where I agree with John, where I think ultimately, we're the ones to do it. You know, in terms of, one area might see a cut one year, or, or not, we're not even talking cuts here. We're talking about reductions in, in.
Increases.
In increases. You know, that's, I haven't seen any place in here where somebody's really recommending cuts to begin with, you know. So, so that, I think that, that is our responsibility to, to do that. And I, I appreciate, you know, we're, we're doing exactly what we're, we're asking of our department heads. They're coming through. They're speaking on what would be the best-case scenario for them and what they would need. And ultimately, we have to weigh those, what those issues are, and, and with the, what the public also feels about it. We're the, we're the voice of the public on it. So, but, you know, and you, you, you have some good points, but I think ultimately, we have to make those tough decisions.
I just feel that we're going to be pitted against each other. Like, if you're, if you go with highway department, and I go with public health, you know, I want, I want to speak out for public health, and you want to speak out for the highway department, we're going to pit each other against each other, you know. And that's why I feel he comes to us with the budget.
Frank, what I, what I can tell you, the difference there, how I look at it, and I've explained this, you know, I've been on the extension committee for quite some time. And when I'm, when I'm there, and I'm an advocate, and I want to look out for what the extension committee does. But I've also told them that I wear two hats. I wear a hat as a member of that committee, and I also wear a hat as a commissioner. And at some point in time, even though I fully support or think that something might be right, that extension, or, or you can call the highway tracking committee that I'm on, but I might ultimately have to say, well, you know what? Those were all really good ideas, except for, there's other issues that come into the county. And so, one year you might win and something, and another year you might not.
I agree with that.
So, so. So, so, but it's, it's good conversation to have, but, you know, I, did you have anything else, Frank, on, on what you're, 'cause I, I had something else that I.
No, the only other thing I had, you know, I, I have to follow up on what you're saying as far as savings, as I look through all these, very few did come to us with saving, you know, after I read all the presentations last week, you know, very few did, you know, come up, here's where we're gonna save you some money, you know, and that's, that's where I have a little bit of a problem with too, so.
Yeah, the vast majority of, of, when we see our spread levy increases, let's face it, the vast majority of it come in two areas, it come with it with the area of employment, where, uh, whether it's, uh, the step increases or cost of living increases, like you said alone, that alone could come close to eating up our, our two percent or three percent that we have. And then on top of that, you've got that big animal out there of health insurance and what, what those increases can be, those two are really what instigates what we can do as a county in terms of other, other things. And I, and I, I wanna make another comment, and it's something, when Kathy was here, and there's something that we miss when we, when we getting into these budgets, we, we concentrate so much on looking at this budget versus last year's budget. It's, it's good, but when you don't include reality into it, you're missing something, and that's why I asked for as close as we could get on year-to-date actual numbers. Because if we're gonna just be satisfied on comparing, a budget is a, is a working document that guides you. Actual is reality. And if at some point, you, if you just continue to say, okay, well, I am good with this because it's only a two point three percent of, of last year's budget, we should accept it, well, if last year's budget, if the actual would have been ten percent below the budget, would you still accept the two point seven percent increase or two point three percent increase? I don't think so. So at some point, we need to bring that into play here, so.
Well, I, I just wanted to say too that, uh, I, it's, it's good, it's, it's the right way for us to be debating on those issues, that you said we pit against each other, well, that's our job, is to, is to discuss those things and to, and to argue for our points, and hopefully come up with a, with a consensus when we're done. Uh, that's not a negative, I think that's a positive, is to, that we advocate for, for certain programs that we think are more important than others, and, and we listen to others, uh, advocate for their programs. And, uh, in that whole process, uh, you know, Brian is here to, to advise us and to, and to remind us when we may be getting into territory that could be dangerous in some other way, but, uh, we, we need, we need the input for all of us to make those decisions. But, yeah, it's, uh, it's, it's frightening to think about, you know, having to go in there and where do you make these million doll, this million dollar, uh, cut, but, uh, it's worked out every year, if we've managed to do it without, uh, hating each other in the process, I think that's.
Well, I do wanna continue that too.
Moving right along. Anything else?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, you know, and I, I'm gonna make one final comment on this budget, and when we were into this discussion phase last week, when we were deciding if we're gonna have a meeting today or not, I suggested, and both John and I agreed, and I think it was worthwhile for us to have this meeting today. And part of what I said is, you as the administrator should put together and start, start knocking that eight point five percent down, and I see that it went from eight point five to eight point seven eight, so, something went wrong during the course of the week here, but, so, so, so maybe we can, maybe we can make better progress next time.
We'll make greater progress next week. And, and I do have a lot of notes on some ideas.
And we're scheduled to go another half an hour, right? And I think Brian's prepared to present to us these things, and I think we need to make use of our time, so.
Yeah, yeah, he's, he's, I think he, he wasn't anywhere.
He wasn't done, done.
Well, yeah, I guess, wanted to know if that's where you wanna head down the road today on, on some of these requests, and just some of the things that we've gone over. Yeah, it, it, it did go the wrong direction and, and, but, I know he's, he's just having a little fun with that, but, that, that, that new request on the jail, I think is very, very important, that we need to have good dialogue at the board level in regards to, uh, where we're gonna track with that, so. But, uh, the other thing is, you know, finding out some of the information, Lori doing her calculations in regards to what the levy limits are, I think puts us in more of a comfort zone, I think, uh, we've, we had several conversations about this during the week, and, and, uh, I think we're, we're positioning ourselves to come up with a, with a very, very good budget at the end of it all. Uh, but if we wanna go into the new requests a little bit, which, which have been presented with you, to you last week, and you've had presentations last week from every one of those, and, uh, I can just kinda start from the top and, and give you our thoughts on what we have thought about it. With the information services one, if you're on the new request, uh, that request is fifty thousand dollars in new software, well, uh, I, I did have a suggestion last week, and I kinda penciled through it a little bit more. Mark's said that, that, that system has not been changed since the nineties. Well, why do we need to pay for that in all one year, when we do have the Internal Service Fund, that this could be funded out of, and then you can repay it at the rate that, that we think is reasonable, whether it be eight or ten thousand a year, so, you know, there could be a forty thousand dollar savings right there, and still get the new equipment, and, and, and move forward on that. The same with technical services, I know last year, um, Tim came in and requested seventy, seventy-two thousand dollars, you granted a thirty-five thousand dollar increase in that. I've had conversation with him, and, and again, he feels they're falling behind a little on the technical, and technical services of replacement of that, but a twenty thousand dollar request at this time is probably too much, I mean, maybe a five or ten. I think that it inches up every year in regards to the cost of things is more important than, and that's what I told him last year, uh, we cut it in half and you guys approved it. He said he hadn't any increase for five years or something, and, well, yeah, you know, you know what the years have been as far as budgeting, so we can make some progress there, so.
Hey, Brian, be, before you go on to the next one, just in regards to these two issues where you said, you know, and the only, the only thing that troubles me a little bit about, about, for example, the new fifty thousand, you say, well, okay, well, we can just pay it ten thousand a year, that, that's kinda backwards to way our internal fund currently works, because typically, we pay for it, and then you put in the ten thousand the next number of years to be ready to replace it again.
Right.
You know, so, so it is a little bit backwards, uh, from, from how we, we normally handle our internal service fund, in this particular case, we're borrowing from the Internal Service Fund to buy something, and if you're, if you were to do that right, then you almost have to increase.
Continue on.
Your future payments so that you're not only paying back, but then also paying forward to make sure that you have the funds.
Well, and we actually did that with our payroll software. So we, we purchased that ahead of time, 'cause that wasn't in the Internal Service Fund, but we, and then we're kinda doubling up on the contribution.
Right.
Yeah, but, which is still better than an all-at-once scenario.
Right. And I, I think that scenario is absolutely correct, uh, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Campbell, but if the system is gonna last ten, twelve, fifteen years.
Right.
And you start with a five or ten thousand dollar, and you pay for it in five years, and then you can, continue to contribute at that rate, and that would have to be worked out with Lori as the amortization schedule on it, so, yeah, you're absolutely right. But I suppose at one point in time, you had to make the purchase in order before you amortize the, the payment out, so, just like, I guess, the example she used.
So I, I don't disagree, but I just, I just think we'd have to.
Word of caution on.
Review.
Rather than five, we'll take ten years.
The payback portion, on how you're gonna not only make that up, but then be prepared to when you have to buy.
Move forward, yes.
That's a, that's a true internal service fund.
Absolutely. Mr. Chair, I believe Commissioner Everett had something as well.
Well, no, that's what I was just gonna say, we take ten years instead of five, and we'll have it, we'll be prepared, 'cause if the other software lasted since the nineties, certainly this should last ten years, hopefully, and.
And I would, I would support that.
Yeah. And I, I guess, you know, we certainly, with any time there's a personnel request, it would be really nice to, I guess my past experience has been to work with the department head, uh, before the board makes a recommend, or receives a recommendation as to cuts, but, you know, sometimes, uh, we're doing a lot of remodeling out there, and we haven't discussed this with Lori, that, that, this is just an idea, that maybe with the remodeling and the workstation deficiencies and stuff, maybe, uh, maybe halftime position would, would be better, at least to start with, and with maybe the agreement that it could go up, but that's something that I'd wanna discuss with each and every department head that has this, but at least you don't, at least you're not just totally ignoring it, if there is a need there, and I think we agree there is a need, but then we look at all the improvements, not just the personnel improvements, but the, the flow of work, and how we can improve that flow of work along with it. So I think there can certainly be some savings from the request, but maybe I'm wrong on that.
That, that's the one, that's the one of all these requests that I've seen where the revenues actually support the need for it, and just because we're gonna remodel and we're gonna end up having sixteen or twenty chairs for people to sit and wait in, isn't very good service to our county either. Or people aren't gonna wanna spend two hours sitting and waiting to get something done in there, and I, you know, I think the revenues dictate that, and, and when we start, what is it, so many, what do we get so much per transaction, so you think of the number of vehicles that it takes to, to do that, that's more people coming in.
Right.
And I actually think if it's a, make it a more pleasurable experience, we'll get more business rather than people going to a different facility to get their, get their tabs or license.
But if we run a more efficient thing out there, you know, I think if they're running with one cash register, or if you have more and stuff like that, if we can run it more efficiently, you know, probably we don't have to increase staff, you know, I'm just, you know, right now, it's, we've already said that it may not be the most efficient way to run a department, you know, but they're very limited in what they've got, you know, but if we give them the tools to do their job.
Well, I think the way things are increasing and, and the increase in transactions, we, I think we need a full-time person out there.
Okay.
And, and hiring a halftime person, that's maybe somebody looking for a little different type of job, so they may not wanna increase to that full-time. So, um, just, that's my personal opinion, is I think we need a full-time person, and, um, after the remodel, it'll just make it that much more efficient, 'cause they're, they're getting behind right now, the way things are, and with the extra cash registers and that sort of thing, that'll just keep them up to, more up to date, I think. Plus, the state is giving them more and more things to do here, rather than shipping all that work down to the state, we actually are doing it all here, so each transaction takes longer.
Okay.
Because we're entering that information here, rather than, you know, doing the minimal side here and get it, giving it to the state.
They're not increasing what we get, I suppose, from the state either.
Oh, we did get a fee increase, you know.
Driver's license.
For driver's license for next year, yeah.
If I may, uh, the veteran services is the next one on the list, uh, that's a new request, Tom runs an efficient department over there, and, and, uh, I, I know what he is asking for is contingent. Well, um, frankly, our reserves are a pretty good contingent right now, and I think that if he came to the board and, and made that request and justified it to you, that he would certainly get the additional hours at some time during the year, if he so needed those, I, I, that's my feeling, and I don't know that we can build in a contingent to each and every department, um, not that it certainly doesn't worthy, isn't needed, but, uh, um, I guess that's something that you'll, you know, can certainly give us some feedback on. Planning and zoning, it was a twenty-five hundred, and that was for the EDA, and I don't know how much action we will see there, maybe we could cut that in half or something, I know we want some funds in there to operate it, but, you know, again, uh, to what amount?
Could there, could there be room in there, whether it came out of the overall, general budget of the planning and zoning, or even out of the administration budget, where, uh, you think we could find twenty-five hundred bucks?
That's right.
You know, so, you know, I, I think we, I think we could, but the whole idea in that, and, you know, and I, and I was the one who actually raised that, if we're gonna have this, uh, separate, and really what it was amounted to too, was, for example, when we had these people come in and you had to pay them, if they're gonna serve on a committee for you.
Yeah.
Or, or an advisor to you, we have to, like, we do all of our committees, we give them a per diem to.
Right.
And that was kinda what that's all about.
Right.
And that's gonna depend on the applications.
That's right.
And if there's no applications, then.
Yeah.
And so far, I think we've only got a couple of townships that have even opted into this deal, so.
And I did receive some feedback from, uh, one of the councilmen from Glendon, that they had discussed this, that, that resolution, and he said that they were ready to go with it, but, uh, you know, they'll probably wait for a need to arise, and then they can pass the resolution, so, uh, it's out there and we'll discuss it further, and, and during my reports, I wanna use a, an example of economic development in this county that has just taken place, that's pretty exciting, I think. But, yeah, you're right, we could probably eliminate that altogether, because this is the board, this is the per diems that's going to be meeting on that.
We know if we have to spend it, we're gonna find someplace within our current.
Yeah. And, and, uh, that's sure, one for part-time, in, in the scheme of their budget, I, I didn't address the five thousand, seven hundred dollars there. Corrections, um, as I reported, I think Julie does just a tremendous job of, of managing the budget, and we probably need to have some more direct conversations in regards to, um, that FTE, and I'm certainly not in a position to recommend, uh, any reduction on that, the only, I, you know, the, the loss of six beds, that's a clear, direct expense. We know that, 'cause we're full right now, and, and if we get short-changed another six beds, those beds have to go someplace else, because that's the, that's just the way it works over there, we're full, we're, we're overfull, so we are, we are taking people out, we might save some on the, the, the regular budget, like right now, she said she's running about nine out of county, and she's budgeting, I think, for fifteen, so that's kind of a gap, but these six, these new dollars, that, that's, that's a known, I, I think that's.
Brian, I, I think the, the question becomes more, though, do, do tho, do those six people actually require the addition of a full-time person to transport them?
That's the question.
And it could, could we, can we do some work to really study what, how that transportation system works? Does that mean, uh, should we just have a different sized vehicle where more people can fit in a vehicle, and you have the same person driving it?
Yeah.
Well, we talked about last week, uh, you know, it doesn't sound like they've actually spoken to other counties in terms of being more competitive.
Right, competitive with transportation.
You know, if we wouldn't, you know, do a, a contract with somebody where they know they're guaranteed so much money, you know, and we know, we're, we know we're gonna utilize this anyway, you know, maybe we can cut a lot better deal for ourselves and get some transportation involved in that, you know, eliminate this need, so.
Right.
I mean, I think it's at worst, it's at least worth taking a look, a hard look at, so.
Yeah.
I think there are more beds than prisoners, uh, you know.
Oh, there definitely are, yeah.
So, there should be a, should be a market to do some of that.
I think within a reasonable driving distance too, of, of our location, so.
Well, that, that transportation issue that you're talking about, Grant, it's, it's, it's a huge reason why we still have the number of counties that we have that participate in our juvenile center, because it's the transportation issue that's key. And, you know, so if other areas want our, our business, they might wanna look to that as an example of something that can work.
That's right. And, Mr. Chair, I think though, what Julie also talked about was, the position wasn't just for transportation, it was for coordination of courts and, and activities and the, so there was a number of things that she was talking about, but that's something I think we need to have a hard discussion with, with her, and, and see if there's, um, there's some room that can be done. The, the equipment on the forty-one thousand, and she had that in her request last year, and, uh, we assured her, or the board assured her, that if that system fails, that that would be purchased, it's security equipment, so we can certainly look at the capital improvement plan, it's allowed within that, plus, um, again, if we wanna go back to the Internal Service Fund to look at the same philosophy as we did with the first one, um, that could be purchased by other means and repaid. There was about eight thousand dollars, I believe, Lori, in the Internal Service Fund for the replacement of this system, this system is very old as well, so she's kinda just waiting for it to crash, but, um, again, that could be reduced considerably and looked at, you know, to me, sixty-five hundred a year, or something like that, for the next ten years we could put into, and then we would be able to replace that system, so I think there's, I think there's fair, definitely some ser, serious savings that could be, occur within that corrections.
Brian, I, I would, I would certainly like to see you, um, you know, we've, we've had all of these really good, um, price adjustments or reductions based on estimates in the capital improvement, and I, and I know we've got the issue with the motor vehicle department with the remodeling that we're gonna probably, but I would, I would rather us have the capital improvement option be the first option.
Okay.
To make the original investment in it, and then to set up.
And then set up the fund.
The Internal Service Fund to replace it. Uh, now, if there ends up not being enough money in the capital improvement fund, you know, when you consider what, what we wanna do, or what, what might be recommended at the motor vehicle department, then, then we might have to look at that other option as option two, but I would prefer us use the capital improvement as option one.
Okay, good, good. So, uh, well, as you can tell, the dollars are mounting up, uh, fairly. Okay, good, good. So, uh, well, as you can tell, the dollars are mounting up fairly quick here. Not, you don't agree with necessarily all, and we have good discussion about it, we'll discuss with the department head. Juvenile detention, um, boy, I'll tell ya, um, I, I personally, in, in, and I've been kind of involved with this personnel issues and the changes and some of the concerns and troubles. I have a real concern there, and I know our two commissioners that are on that board, I don't know if they share it as deeply as I do. I, I really have a liability issue with, with, um, the, the non-consistency of employees at night to carry that thing through. So I think this is a small amount to, to, and I, I don't think we can touch that much. I think it's a very good plan. Extension, I'm not on the extension committee. My initial thought was, well, it's a tough time to add a half a position if we're really tough on things. So, um, again, we'd like to have discussion with the department to see what, uh, what can be worked out there, but that's a sizable chunk as well. Buildings and grounds, um, we need to do some, I think, rescheduling there. We've had some change of personnel. What their, their concern is to get, to get someone during the day shifts for covering the, um, the cleanliness of the place during the day. And, um, I mean, I was suggesting maybe a halftime there, or twenty thousand dollars to fill in for some part-time hours. But, um, we'll work with them on that, and, um, I know they don't always like to be pushed to the back of the line, but, uh, I think we moved, we've made quite a bit of improvements in efficiencies. We've had some personnel changes. I think some scheduling changes and things are, um, are, are going to work out there. So I think there's gonna be some savings there as well.
Seems to me what we have to be able to assure though, is that we're gonna live up to our end of the contracts for those rentals. And if we're saying we're cleaning, we should be making sure that we're cleaning.
Yeah.
Their offices and so on. And, uh, that's, uh, it's a contractual thing that we need to be able to accomplish. And it's, you know, it's not really, it's not their fault, uh, you know, we can't say, uh, well, we just didn't have time to get through this week, you know.
Have we had concerns by tenants?
I've heard a number of concerns.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, we have. And, and many times it's cleanliness within the public restroom areas and the hallways and there. And, you know, you go into any, any department store of any size, they clean those on the hour. And I don't know what the volume of traffic is over in that building, but, uh.
If it's only once a day, it's not enough.
It's, once a day is not enough. You're absolutely right. But, so I think we can, I think we can work out some things, so I think some dollars to.
Well, and that's a specific issue that maybe can be addressed without looking at a full-time, you know, employee to do that too, so.
Yep, yep.
Some of it may be priorities, rather than, you know, a full-time employee issue, so.
Yeah, and, and I know Robbie's kinda switched, not switched, the maintenance staff that he has, they have been, they've been working very hard with all of the projects, and I have a list and an update on the list today too, that we'll talk about. But, but, uh, the maintenance staff, meaning the mechanical things, they really aren't, they aren't part of the janitorial staff. To pull them off of working in the ceiling to get the air ducts, uh, working right, and then say, oh, by the way, someone just threw up over in the family service center, so could you run over there and clean that up? I, I, I just don't think that's the intent of them, so. But we'll work through that. We'll, we'll, we need to move some people around, so maybe some personnel won't be all that excited about doing that, but we'll work within, uh, within what we have. And, and maybe there'll have to be some dollars left in for some part-time help, that, uh, we can do that. And then the new correctional facility, if it's not sixty-two, is it forty-two? Is it thirty? Is it, uh, or whatever? And, and we can work through that as well. So, um, I, I think there's roughly in the area, and not even with, I mean, I think we, there was, we just came up with probably two hundred thousand dollars.
That has to be some sort of priority for, is that correctional, or, you know.
Yes, it does. We have to get.
Financing that, because, you know, you look above here and what we're looking at in terms of increases and, you know, so. We've gotta seriously plan on doing something with that, so even, even if it's painful, we have to come up with some money to start planning on a new jail, so it's. Or else we're gonna have huge problems moving up this list again.
Yeah, that's right.
The Department of Corrections, I think, is only gonna deal with us.
We don't know when the next time they're gonna, I don't know when they're gonna come back and say, okay, we're gonna remove more beds.
We had to negotiate that this year to reduce the pain, so.
Right.
And I spent a little, also a little time on just the general increases to some of those, and, and not to pick on any one situation, but, um, library's request is a twenty thousand dollar increase. Uh, it's about an eight and a half percent increase. Is something less than that, and they did have a soci, uh, substantial increase last year as well. And is eight and a half reasonable? There's four percent, there's three percent. Um, maybe we can come up with some kind of a, and I know Commissioner Everett had said, well, hopefully just don't, um, you know, randomly select people, because some haven't had an increase for, for quite a few years. But maybe we should be looking at some of these departments at a two and three and one percent, or whatever that. Historical society is a nine thousand dollar increase. Well, they haven't had one for a while, but that's a sizable increase. The, the, um, senior coordinator position, they got cut out some funding, which Grant serves on a committee that funds that partly, I think, through the, that's, they're asking for a nine thousand dollar increase. Well, if you cut back on some of those and, and talk to them to see what the other, um, options are on it, we may be able to sneak up, sneak in another hundred thousand dollar there. And then if we look at some of our revenue sources. So if, um, if that's your desire, I'll bring some of those back in more formal, um, and then you can discuss them, EA and A in, out, and, and we can go from there, if that's, um, what you'd like to do for the next meeting, next meeting. I mean, we're getting into the first of August, so we got some time, things are moving along. I'm, I'm pleased with the progression of how things have gone here so far, so.
Well, Brian, and some of these, and you brought up the library, you know, there was, there was a comment made that maybe some of our satellite places would shut down, or whatever. I, you know, I think we need to find out.
That's right.
What, what would really happen if that number wasn't twenty thousand? What, what are you gonna be faced with, and?
That, if I may, that information, um, we'll be getting in August from, uh, La Jolla's regional library director. Not only for Clay County, but for the other six counties.
But I think it goes back to a, uh, excuse me, Mr. Chair, goes back to a comment Mr. Eric, Mr. Gross said too, that, you know, sometimes when we just continue, and I, again, I'll use motor vehicle as, if we continue to do business just as how we've done it, of course we need more people, cause we have more transactions, we have more people visiting the libraries, we have more, we have more, we have more. We have to look to try to say, we, and we could have to get forced sometimes. What are your options? How can you do a better job with what you have? How can you be more efficient? How can you put more satellites without them being manned, or can you combine it with some other offices? I, I don't know the answers, but that's why we have to task these, all these departments internally and externally, that this is all the money that's available. And, uh, I know it's not the, it's not an easy answer, but, uh, that's what we have to do at times. Yeah.
Frank? Is Soil and Water Conservation District in this budget somewhere?
Yes, they are, yes. And I believe their request is about a three, what was their request, Lori, in percentage increase? And I had that down as well, um, to talk to them, to see. I know some of their revenue is drawing up a little bit.
Four point four or five percent, not including the grants. So for just their allocation, that's four point four or five percent.
So.
I mean, I didn't see it anywhere in any of this stuff here yet.
Yeah, page forty-five.
Oh, page, okay. Thank you.
I think this has been a very good meeting. I was concerned a week ago, but I guess I was wrong.
There's always concern, I guess, but, uh, I think Commissioner Everett said it well, it's always worked out, and it'll work out again, and we'll walk away. If I may, before I go to the reports, I do have, and it was gonna be part of my report, but it won't take many seconds or minutes here.
More paper.
More paper, yeah. We, we're chopping down trees pretty graciously this week.
Clay County doesn't have any trees.
Yeah, we're in trouble.
We have to import the trees for the paper.
We're in trouble than we thought.
Okay, uh, now, uh, Commissioner Campbell asked for an update on, we call it the Fund Thirty, and that's the new capital improvement fund. And, uh, what you have is the summary on the front sheet, um, and you'll see that we started with two point two eight, three million dollars. We spent to date about one point seven one six, uh, subtotal of five hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred, um, and thirty-three dollars that remained. But then we have obligated funds. Uh, the motor vehicle roof, um, we did, I think that was thirty-eight thousand dollars. We have not paid for that. That's in that obligated funds. But any of the outstanding ones that we have contracted with, we had contracted with a person for a little over nine thousand dollars to recock the windows of the courthouse. That hasn't been done yet, but that's, that's called, falls within the obligated. So the remaining balance of that is four hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, and I've been kinda telling you it's around five, so, um, four eighty-one is pretty close to around five. So I think Commissioner Campbell, that is a good suggestion on the forty-one five. We could probably obligate those funds to come out of there, and then we'll obligate some dollars to continue forward with that, cause that's a security one, we feel that would fall within the, within the capital improvement plan. And then if you go to the page two and three on this, that lists all of the, um, items that we were going to address. And if you, if you notice, it's pretty darn complete, with the exception at the top of the second page, and that is motor vehicle alarm system and motor vehicle replacing the north window. We have not, we will address that soon, but I think that's probably the only gap in this whole thing right now, to complete this, and, and there's an awful lot of projects here that, uh, I just really have to compliment Robbie and his, and his staff working on these, uh, programs to, to move forward with that. And then the, the remaining three to four pages are the itemized billing of who we've paid and what we've paid them for these umpteen many projects that we've had on this. So, um, it's pretty detailed in nature, this, this whole document. And, but like I said, we promise to keep you updated and, and let you know exactly where we're at. And now, uh, remember, just, and, and Commissioner Gross was not here, when we established, this is the Fund Thirty, and this is the two million, we call it, a capital improvement plan. But we also established a Fund Nineteen, which is we set a hundred thousand dollars aside each year for capital improvements. This is to, to, um, fund them forward, let's say, to have that two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars in that fund. So when there is a roof that needs to be repaired or replaced, we can do so. But we had to, out of the chute, remember, we had like a seventy-eight thousand dollar, um, plumbing problem over at the jail that first year that we established that, and we paid for it out of those capital, which I think is somewhat appropriate, but we didn't, or definitely appropriate, but we didn't have a lot of choices in the matter. But that is building somewhat too, because we've taken a lot of the capital improvement, uh, projects out of here. So, um, that's, that's a real positive thing, so.
So, so we in essence have the forty-one plus some funds, and from the, from the line nineteen that you talked about?
The line nineteen? Um, yes, we definitely have.
Have we used any in two thousand thirteen?
Um.
Of the hundred thousand?
Of the hundred thousand in twenty thirteen, no, I don't think we did. Took it all out of here.
That's what I mean, though. So we, we technically.
We've got this plus.
We still have this plus that.
Mm-hmm.
It's pretty good to fund to start with, you know.
I mean, that, that hundred was meant to, to set up, to build, to, you know, but if we had to use it, we had to use it.
Yeah.
And I keep thinking, going back to, we're kinda just anxiously waiting to see what the motor vehicle, um, and it would only make sense that, that on page two there, those top two items would be incorporated into that same.
They will be, yes. Mm-hmm. Yeah, and we're very close on that, at motor vehicle. In fact, we've got some tentative plans that, that we wanna get cost before we call the, the committee together again, so we can say, this is what we think will work, this is the location it'll work at, this is the costs that are involved, and, and, um, see where we can go from there with the committee's recommendation. So hopefully, maybe within a week, we'll get together, if we can, so.
Right, Brian, that ninety-two thousand that you got there on the repair of the sewer and restrooms and stuff.
That circled?
Is that paid for?
Yes.
So that's, that's already taken out of this?
Yes, yes. The reason why it's circled, and Commissioner Campbell will remember this very, very well, uh, is that the first, about thirty-five thousand on the south side of this courthouse, when we had the pipes that had rusted through and we found debris within the, uh, that was prior to the capital improvement plan. So I need to follow up on that, because I don't know that that can be taken out of that Fund Thirty. We'll get Lori's opinion on that. If she says it's okay from an auditor standpoint, we will probably try to leave it in there, if that's, if that's okay with you guys. Otherwise, it'll come out of Fund Nineteen, the other one, so.
Was there any of that that would have been eligible for insurance?
No, I think we called insurance on that. I don't think so, no. It was wear and tear after sixty years, and, uh, it wasn't an accidental thing, so. We did, cause we did contact insurance on a couple of things. The, the underground wiring that got, um, wet, the first year I was here, and we had to dig up. And then we went inside the tunnel, and we put the, the cabling with inside of the tunnel, and that cost us a fair amount of money. Uh, we did get some insurance money on that, yeah, so.
I've got a question on, uh, similar, general question on, uh, what kind of backup do we have for electrical systems here? If, if the power goes out, do we have generators to run both, uh, buildings?
Emergency lighting and things that are within the buildings, not operate the buildings. Well, I take that back.
Computers, I guess.
I take that back, because on hot days, when, when the usage is high, our diesels kick in to, to, to run the power. But I don't think, I think that's to augment the.
I don't think you wanna perform any surgeries here or anything like that.
No, you wouldn't, yeah.
Well, I guess I'm wondering what our computer systems, do we end up messing up our computer programs when we?
When the power goes down?
Yeah.
It would be easy to say, no, we don't mess them up, but it does occasionally occur, because you have a surge or something like that to, so I, I know, they work with that and try to prevent any of that. We haven't had any for quite a while, so.
We've all got protectors.
Okay, there you go. So it's, it's working fairly well.
Is that also in the family service center, or just your?
Yes, mm-hmm. Yes, it is. But, Mr. Chair, some of the agencies that we lease to may be on a different system. And, uh, and I know one that we worked through a problem last year. I don't know if they've had the problem this year, and, and that was Lakes and Prairies, that had a problem when the, uh, generators kicked on, when they had a high use. And I haven't heard of any of that this year, when we've had the, the high, and I know we've gone to accelerate use, so I think we may have gotten that corrected last year. Any questions on, on this?
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, if I may.
Yes, sir.
On the reports, it's just one more thing, and I said I'd, I'd say it, I got it from our reports, but I think it's really significant. That last Thursday, we, uh, the Lakes Wind Generation that, uh, you folks approved, had their open house down in Barnesville. And I'll tell you what, it was pretty impressive to go down there and see the, what they're doing. And what they're, they're installing is, um, they're gonna generate electricity that will be put online and shipped wherever it may be. You probably remember this from the presentation, I didn't, but that's about a forty-five million dollar investment in Clay County. And, cause there's thirty towers that are in Clay County, and two of them in Decker County, and they will export power, uh, reusable power. I think that's pretty significant. And you talk about from an economic development. I know it doesn't create a lot of jobs, because it's mostly recognized, but right now in the construction phase, it's creating a lot of jobs, um, that, uh, to, to install these things. And it will generate a sizable tax, and Lori and I will work on, hopefully getting you an estimate. And that might start in the year twenty fifteen, that we may be able to collect some tax off of that.
Paul White said the entire project was about a hundred million dollars.
Is that right? Yeah.
It doesn't start in fourteen at all. I mean, we won't have any benefit, tax benefit in fourteen.
I would say no, because they planned to complete construction by the end of twenty thirteen, so if that would be the case, then it would be assessed for twenty fourteen.
It's based on how much power they create, and then it's the year after that.
That's exactly right. So twenty fourteen may be the year, and it might be twenty fifteen. And yes, it's not just on the value, and like I said, that's why Lori and I, and probably Nancy, will have to work on, uh, researching how that is taxed. It's on, it's on output, much like Crystal Sugar may not have the value in the buildings for resale, but it's what they produce is, is, has the value of it. So that's about the only good example that I could probably give you on that, so. Can I shut up now?
It's up to you. We'll get back to you shortly. John, we'll go to you for committee reports. We took some vacation last week, so I wasn't here for several things, but we did, uh, did have several meetings with the Heritage and Cultural Society. And we are, you know, progressing with this new exhibit, uh, which is taking a lot of, a lot of time. And, uh, it's, it's an exciting, uh, exciting place for the, uh, society to be in. I think we've got a, got a bright future ahead, uh, with, uh, with this project. So you'll hear more about that as we, as we go. That's all I had.
Frank? I had one meeting, Family Healthcare, and, uh, they reported they're getting numerous rewards, so. or honors for how well they're running their organization, you know. So they're getting recognized as a nonprofit organization, as one of the top ones for efficiency and stuff like that. So they're doing a good job over there. They're running behind a little bit in revenues, but they're operating good.
Chief?
I was at the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Summit that we had last week, and it was well attended by people from all over the state. And that was it for me.
Hey, Tuesday afternoon, we had an insurance committee meeting, and primary focus of that meeting was the continued discussions about changing particular insurance coverages. I think the recommendation that came out of the committee was to look at eliminating the double gold policy, and that being replaced with a combination of a VIBA slash HSA, higher deductible plan. So we'd have, we'd have both the standard one VIBA, and we'd also have a VIBA slash HSA. And, and we can get into the differences of those later. But the committee kind of strongly recommended that we move forward with that. And so there's, they're trying to establish some discussions with the unions, because unions, of course, have to, have to approve that. And it's, there's pretty strong feelings that, that that's the right way to go on it moving forward. And I don't know, if Wayne wants to add to that, he can. Then on Thursday, we had our SWAC committee meeting, and we got our typical update from, from the landfill and the activities there. And that, that seems to be moving along okay. The main emphasis of discussion that way is, that day was the continued moving forward with a, a proposal to make to Prairie Lakes. It's a group of four counties right now that deals with the incinerator in Perom. And so we're looking at potentially making an offer to them where we would join in as a partner with them. And that way we could, there's going to be a trade for some fines that would come from there that we could use for daily cover, as well as some additional waste of ours that would go there and be incinerated, which would actually save significantly on our landfill and future needs to expand our landfill. So that, we're working on that. That seems to be moving along very nicely. And I think we're going to be looking at a recommendation coming to this board very soon on, on, from the SWAC committee on that.
On July, Tuesday, July twenty-third, I was also at the insurance meeting that Kevin brought up. And the only thing I would add is the union and non-union employees will be getting together, and they will be getting back to the insurance committee with their preferences. That's all I have. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one follow-up comment on that Lakes Wind. In checking with planning and zoning, Colleen stated that that was the largest structure or building to permit that they have issued in Clay County. So that just tells you the, the magnitude of that project. We've gone through the update on the building projects that, that you have in front of you. I've headed, attended the insurance committee, I think, I was real favorable how, how the thing is progressing. I think the employees understand the needs to change some of the programs. I think that's moving along quite well. A lot of budget work this weekend also on the 2013 revenues to, or revenues and expenditures. Had another meeting in regards to the racetrack and the additions of the motocross out there at Glendon. And we're trying to set up one for maybe next Monday too with the county attorney's office. My understanding is that they did have that case on last Wednesday in front of the judge, and it was delayed for another two weeks, allowing some additional information to be collected. But there's some, continue to be some real concerns about the expansion out there on that. Visited with Kathy, in fact, yesterday morning, I had extensive meeting with her. And part of it was the joint powers agreement that, that she'll come to the board and report on. They're going to be coming to the board for signatures on, on agreement between the Becker County, Clay County, Otter Tail, and Wilken County of forming a, a public health entity. It's a joint powers entity, so that employees will remain employees of each perspective county and different things. So she'll go into the details on that. And I know Commissioner Gross is also on that committee and came in at a later date, but been brought up to speed somewhat on that. And I did attend that technical meeting, referenced solid waste. After their solid waste meeting, I didn't make it in for the solid waste meeting, but I did sit on the technical. And I, and what Commissioner Campbell was referring to in trading of the fines, and, and when, if they bring the fines over to our landfill, then how do they be efficient in carrying solid waste back? And what types of different equipment is needed? And where can it be loaded efficiently? And things like that, because it's different equipment that's used to haul fines versus haul solid waste. And they're working through that to, to have a pattern. And as you've noticed probably on the news and in the paper, there has been a little publicity on the wheelage tax that Minnesota allowed the counties to pass. And I think the, the report said last night that about half of the counties, and I say, I think the same thing, I don't know if I forwarded that to you or not, but AMC is saying about half of the counties have passed a wheelage tax that would then go into effect for 2014. Appears like there's, I think, favorable response from the constituents. They feel like the roads need the, the money. And, and as we stated when, in talking with the press on it, gasoline tax is based per gallon. And if we truly are getting more efficient on the number of gallons we use, our road, our dollars collections go down, and, and you know what costs of repairing the roots, roads do. So, anyway, that's it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.